I would like to call to order the city council meeting for April 2nd, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Fish. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. I'd like to start off with our invocation. Pastor Darrell Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway will provide our invocation for tonight.
First, you need to change the sign. There we go.
Please, please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Divine Creator, we thank you for this world that you have created which is so beautiful. We thank you too for this beautiful day that provides warmth and light for all that we do. We thank you that we are able to live in this fine community, to blow joyous blessings, and to do our best to make it a better community for all. It is for this reason that we have come to your presence this evening, to ask that your blessings might be upon us, that we might understand the things we need to do to make this a better community, not just for ourselves but for all the citizens thereof, that we indeed might look forward to a better tomorrow. May this city council and their staff have your wisdom to be with them as they seek to do those things that make this even better community for generations to come. We know not what the world may be like from now or years from now, but Lord, we would seek here in Temple City this evening to do our best that someday down the line, they might look upon us this evening and say, "They did a good job." Thank you, and amen.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, we now have Boy Scout Troop 174. The scouts presenting these colors are Ben Lu, Alex Kwan, Austin Kwan, and Jean Naino. Troop 174 will be participating in the San Gabriel Valley Jamboree Campery, which is the annual Boy Scout Skills Competition located at Firestone Scout Reservation in Brea from April 26th to April 28th. They meet every Thursday at Westminster Presbyterian Church from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Detail forward march. Detail halt. Post. All of those not in uniform. Place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, together by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail about face. Detail forward march. Detail halt. All guard is ready.
How's everyone doing tonight? Okay, moving on to item five ceremonial matters. First up, we have Deputy and Firefighter of the Year. We're going to start with Deputy of the Year. And that would be Deputy Bart Marshall. Deputy Marshall has been selected as the 2018 Deputy of the Year. Deputy Marshall has been with the Sheriff's Department for 11 years, and I would like to call up Captain David Flores to introduce Deputy Bart Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and Council. It's my pleasure to speak to you about Deputy Marshall, but first, you know, over the decades, the city has been so supportive in honoring our deputies and firefighters, so I just want to start off by saying thank you for that, especially in today's climate that I think hopefully is getting better, but it's always very appreciated. And so, as you said, Bart Marshall, he's been on the department for over 11 years, and prior to Temple Station, he worked in Central Jail, and they noticed his talent back then because in February 2016, he was Employee of the Month. So I thought I'd start embarrassing him right away. He arrived at Temple Station in 2016, and was always very well-respected by his peers. He's a well-rounded, sharp individual. In 2018, I issued three commendations for Bart. The first one was on January 30th, 2018, where Bart was handling a burglary call. And as you know, the directive for us is burglar alarms, burglary-type calls, we make it a priority. We want to get there as soon as we can, and we've had great success in arresting criminals during the act. And so, as everyone was responding, Bart realized that he had sufficient personnel at the scene and started directing assisting units to start checking the area. And sure enough, another deputy was checking the area, spotted a car of four gang members who had come into the city. A short pursuit happened, all four suspects jumped out of the car, ran into a large nursery, and we were able to capture all four suspects. And it was just Bart's, just thinking, looking downstream to be able to say, use some common sense on how do we not just handle the call, make sure people are safe, but actually catch these criminals. So he was commended for that action. Also, on November 16th, 2018, Bart was handling another burglary-type call, and while he was en route there, quickly trying to get there, he noticed another car parked on the side of the road that matched the description of some other suspect. So he mentally, made a mental note of the license plate, jotted it down, went to the burglary call, make sure everyone was safe, passed along that information. That information led to the arrest of another burglary ring related to Temple City. So still, he had his head on his football, observing, and did a great job there. And the last one was November 20th, 2018, and this is just, just really gives some insight on Bart's work ethic and how he works so well with others. You remember the Woolsey Fire where we had the fires happening? We have an incident management team where we deployed about 600 personnel, and to manage the deployment, imagine logistics and water, feeding, getting transportation, and getting intelligence, and where to deploy our resources best. Bart was part of that incident management team, and we were on 12 hours on, 12 hours off for days. And Bart had been working that for four days, and that team was severely understaffed. So Bart, he volunteered to work two extra days on that team just to help out with the fire. So I really appreciated that. He really thinks of others. I went into the dispatch area today and said, "Hey, tell me about Bart," and here are some of the words that came out: helpful, professional, compassionate, hardworking. All these things, and I have to say, I can attest to it personally, that that is very true. And just on some other note about Bart, as I'm learning, apparently, he's a great person to have around during a barbecue. He's really good at barbecuing. So I think he's got a trigger, and he smokes meat, and that whole thing. He likes to travel, he's a good golfer, but Bart, I just want to say, I'm very, very proud of you. It's well-deserved. You have a very bright future, and it's just, really just a pleasure to have you at the station, so congratulations.
That was embarrassing. Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you. It's very, very humbling to be recognized for what I believe what any other deputy does on any day of the week. Really, we just go out there, we try to meet our directives and just enforce public safety. And so, I don't do anything special that any other deputy wouldn't do in my place. So to be recognized is, it's very humbling. So to stand up here, I can say is thank you. You know, obviously, the city is so kind to us, and they recognize us. You guys are amazing. Better half, thank you, dear. Mom, Dad, brother, sister. Sarge, thank you very much. Joe, and Captain. And then, obviously, our friends in the back over there. We see them every day, and can't recognize them enough either. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Don't, don't leave. Deputy, don't leave. I would like to introduce my fellow council members and also your family to come up. I have a, I have a plaque. I just wanted to read this plaque really, really quickly. The City of Temple City Deputy of the Year Award 2018 presented to Bart Marshall. This award is presented on behalf of the city council and the residents of Temple City in recognition of exemplary service to the community and meritorious performance as a deputy sheriff. Thank you.
Do we want you to stay here?
Sure.
Why don't you go, why don't you go to the podium and do it from the top?
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, we're gonna stay up.
Just stay. Okay, we're gonna now move on to Firefighter of the Year. Firefighter of the Year is Specialist Clarin McAllister. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yay. He's been selected as the 2018 Firefighter of the Year. Firefighter Specialist McAllister has been with the fire department service for 18 years and is, has been serving the city of Temple City for 11 years. Now, I would like to introduce Assistant Fire Chief Tony Ramirez to introduce Firefighter Specialist McAllister.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Council, and city staff for having this day to recognize one of our firefighters. You have a good one here, Clarin McAllister. He's a firefighter specialist. He's the gentleman that drives the fire engine everywhere. When you see him around town, that's what that position is, firefighter specialist. He's the driver or engineer, we used to call it back in the day. But yeah, he's been here, and he was a paramedic, and he's an engineer in town, so he's been on every street in the city in his 11 years, and numerous homes. There might be somebody here that he's been to your house and helped in a time of need. So he and his crew over here are one of the three shifts that are on duty 24/7. So you're lucky to have a good one here. Let me give you a little background on Clarin. So he's been on our job for 18 years. He started as an FSA, is, was our fire service, or fire suppression agent, so it's the hand crews that work on the brush fires. So they're the ones you see with garden tools going up beside the, of the fire with no hose or anything. So they're the real heroes doing the hard work, and so he did that, worked for a real small department. We don't really consider, LA City Fire Department before he came to LA County. My brother, my brother and cousins and nephews were all in LA City, so every chance I get to jab in my, I take it. So, but he came to the big leagues, came to LA County 18 years ago, and we're proud to have him. So he's served all over the county. He's been in La Cañada, Chatsworth, Hawaiian Gardens, Azusa, Castake, Little Rock, and he's here now at Temple City. So he's pretty much touched every corner of the county. So he's got a lot of experience he's brought to the city. He was born and raised in the city of Altadena, and after his marriage to his beautiful wife Carla, they moved to Arcadia where they re, where they resided for nearly 10 years. And Carla's here, right? There she is, and his family. We can introduce the family right now. I guess your father's here and mother?
Yep, my father Alan, my mom Bonnie, my father-in-law Doug. We also retired from LA County Fire Department.
That's her, that's her.
My mother-in-law Beverly, my brother-in-law Mike, and my twins Tosh and I.
Beautiful family. So Clarin is a graduate from Cal State University, Los Angeles, with a Bachelor of Arts degree majoring in Spanish with a minor of comparative linguistics. I don't know what that is. But Clarin also serves as a certified pure fitness trainer for our fire department. So he gives instructions to all of our younger firefighters, and some of our aging ones, on what we do to keep ourselves healthy and do the things that we need to do at the time we get those calls. Go ahead. Can he cook? Well, I don't know, you know.
Okay, well, I was here. I was here about the cooking.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's a great cook. They all are good cooks.
Okay, good.
I'm sure they're gonna invite you over for dinner soon. Clarin now lives in San Clemente with his wife Carla, who we met, and his kids. I saw three kids on here.
Yeah, our older daughter Katrina couldn't make it tonight.
Katrina's not here, so she's the one that's missing. And in addition to his passion to serve the Temple City community, Clarin enjoys running marathons, surfing with his family, and working on his old Model A Ford. So Clarin McAllister, everybody.
Congratulations, and I would like to invite his family up for a photo. You can go too. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say a few things?
Sure, I'll keep it, I'll keep it real short, but first of all, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here in Temple City. I've been here for 11 years because I love it here so much. It's a great community. Couple of weeks ago, I was in our station in our captain's office, and we have a plaque on the wall that has all of the firefighters of the year since 1990. And I have been lucky enough to know all of them except for four. And it is an honor to be able to be on that plaque with those, the great guys that have been firefighters of the year here in Temple City. Thank you.
His family can now come up. Poor Brian. Oh, no, come on. The City of Temple City for Firefighter of the Year Award 2018 presented to Claron McAllister. This award is presented on behalf of the city council and residents of Temple City in recognition of explanatory service, exemplary service to the community and meritorious performance as a firefighter specialist. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna continue with the agenda. We have a couple of changes on our agenda. First, I would like to pull item 10A Pavement Management Program Update out of the agenda order and hear this item before public comments and consent calendar. So we're going to start again with new business, item 10, pavement management update.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, thank you for bringing this item forward. Margot Yap and Lisa Seem from NCE, a firm that's an expert in pavement management. This is what they do day-to-day, all the time. We're gonna go from a little bit more, less of a joyous occasion to a little bit sobering element of what our pavement management, or excuse me, the pavement condition in the city is. This is not an academic exercise. This is actually a real document that the council and staff, your professional staff will use to evaluate what recommendations we will bring forward, and then in consultation with you and you approving, what we will be doing going forward. The picture, the picture we are about to present is not pretty. It is one that is going to require some decisions down the line if you make the decision to try to bring a revenue measure before the, before the community, or you do not. Our road system is, is in fair shape but is deteriorating quickly. The number that struck me the most significantly was $29 million, which you'll see shortly. That $29 million is deferred maintenance we have today. If we do exactly what we've been doing for the last few years, which is not an insignificant amount of money, but not enough to move the needle up in terms of improving the pavement condition in the city, that number will grow to $57 million in 10 years. It's incredibly sobering to see that going forward. So I'm gonna let Margot with the compressed time that she has go right into it.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I appreciate your flexibility with the agenda this evening. As the city manager said, I have a little bit of a sobering tale to tell, to tell, which is unfortunate. I always like the feel-good part, you know, with the firefighter and the deputy. That's always the best part of the council agenda, I think. Anyway, so what Lisa and I have been working on for the city is trying to get a sense of what the pavement needs are. And we usually try to use something called the Pavement Management Program. And Pavement Management Program, as you can see, really tries to answer some very typical questions. There's a lot of academic definitions, but I like to think of it this way is, it's trying to help us answer how much, how many miles of roads, streets do we own in the city that are publicly maintained? Is it in good or fair or poor condition? What are the repairs? And probably the most important, how much money do we need to maintain it, to improve it over the next year or the next 10 years? And so, we've done several things to try and answer these questions for you, and I'm gonna walk you through each one of them. The first thing I wanted to share with you is that we sometimes forget that the streets are really one of the most important assets the city owns. I like to start my stories by saying that, you know, every resident in town, when they get up in the morning, they open their front door, they are going to be using a city street, whether they go to school, whether they ride their bicycles, take the bus, get on the freeway, they're going to be using a city street. And it's an integral part of the city's infrastructure. And if you look at these, this table, I mean, it's just a bunch of numbers, but what it essentially says is that we've got about 72 miles of roads, and they're broken up into different classifications, arterials, collectors, residentials. Arterials would be the main streets in town, the residentials are the neighborhoods, and then the collectors are the ones that connect those two. And the key point is not all these numbers, but really that you have a value on this asset. The 72 miles of roads that we have within Temple City is valued at about over $100 million. So it's a valuable asset.
Excuse me, but is that value based on the condition of the road? Or is there just some general number that you guys use based on the mileage?
It's based on the mileage. What we say is that if we had a catastrophe occur, let's say a massive earthquake, and we had to rebuild the entire city's infrastructure from scratch, it would cost us over $100 million to rebuild it. And that's not including the sidewalks, the storm drains, the signs, anything like that. We're just talking simple pavement.
Carbon gutters.
No carbon gutters either.
Right.
So you don't get any extra value for a good street versus a poor street, then?
For the replacement value. But the maintenance, however, that is a different issue. That does depend on the cost and the condition. The other thing we need to do is, once we've got the sense of the inventory of how many streets we have, is what is the condition? Is it good, fair, or poor? And so, we look at different distresses. These are some typical distresses, for instance, that we've seen. And as a pavement engineer, what these distress tell me are different things. An alligator crack, for instance. An alligator crack, for instance, would mean it says structural problems, and that means that the repair is going to be much more expensive than if you had ravelling on the bottom right, which would be a surface type of distress and could be corrected with a seal.
Can you guys still see out there? It's just the light for shining down on you.
So the, there are several protocols that's used. One is called ASTMD 6433. ASTM is the American Society of Testing Materials. It's a national standard. In fact, this is a standard that's used internationally as well. And what we do is we take a 10% sampling rate of every single road in town, and we use inspectors that are certified by both Orange County that are certified by both Orange County and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And we distill all the distresses that they collect and we put it into a scale that goes from zero to 100. And we call this the PCI or the Pavement Condition Index. And you can see that if it's a brand-new road, that'd be at 100. And you can see there's an example of a good road up there. And if it fails, or very poor fail, it's gonna be broken up. It looks almost like gravel in many cases. So, the question then is, well, where is Temple City? And it's solidly in the fair condition. And I'm usually asked at this point, you know, is that good or bad? Where should we be as a city? And I can tell you that the answer to that question is really a policy decision. But I can, as a pavement engineer, my job is to give you the financial ramifications of that policy decision. So, if we look at some of these roads, and I'll come back to the financial implications in a little bit, this you can tell obviously it's pretty new. It's been recently paved, the PC has over 90. And so, we would expect this to have very little maintenance as required. And if we don't do anything to this road, and we just let it sit out there, and you know, the garbage trucks run over, the delivery trucks, the passenger vehicles, eventually you can see that it starts getting grayer. The gray color of this road means that it's been oxidized, the sun has its impact, and small cracks begin to form, but still reasonably smooth. You know, the skateboarders in the neighborhoods love it. It's in pretty good shape. If we don't do anything, let it sit a few more years, then pretty soon you can now see we have more cracks. But these type of cracks tell me a particular story. This is a pattern of cracking we call alligator cracking. And these type of cracks go all the way down to the bottom of the asphalt layer. So, it's a structural failure. We're now beginning to see the symptoms of aging and structural distress. And if we continue not doing anything, then what you'll see is potholes start developing, we have to patch them. And then after the last, this past winter, I don't know if you've noticed, potholes have kind of exploded everywhere, not just in Temple City but all up and down the state.
Question.
Yes.
How long does it take for a brand-new road to get to this point?
For residential road, you can probably expect 25, 20 years serviceability.
Serviceable life.
Yes. But for low traffic, it might even be 25 to 30. If you had an arterial, like Las Tunas, for instance, a lot less, maybe 10, 12, 15 years sometimes, simply because of the volume of traffic that the road experiences.
Alright, thanks.
And is that with no maintenance?
This is with no maintenance.
So, if we put a new road in, we're expected to have that new road for 20 to 25 years, but with no maintenance?
Yes, little or no maintenance. The design life, when the engineers are designing it, they will usually use, select a design life of 20 years. That's the standard. Historically, however, if you have some really old roads in town that are failing sooner, and that's because the Caltrans actually had a 10-year design life for many years before, in the last 15 years or so, it moved, it got moved to 20. Now, I have some good news. Even though your condition is at 58, you have roads that are in better condition than others. If you look at this pie chart, what the green part is the good roads, the blue's the fair, yellow's poor, and the red is very poor. And overall, we can see that about a third of it is in very, in good condition. Another 20% is in fair, another third in poor, and the rest of it in very poor. But when we look at the different types of roads you have, these are your arterials, these are your high-volume roads. And you'll notice that two-thirds of it's actually in pretty good condition. That's great. If you look at your collectors, that kind of mirrors the overall average. And then if you look at your residentials, the picture's a little bit worse. So, what these three pie charts at the bottom tell me is that we have, in the city, put a priority on high-volume roadways and maintain those. And that's not unusual. This is what most cities do. And also because arterials are eligible for federal funding in many cases, but residential roads are not, yes.
So, other than Rosemead and Las Tunas, do we have any which you would consider arterial roads in the city?
Lisa? Because the minor arterials, I don't know.
Temple City.
Yeah, but I don't think we have any principal arterials. Okay, alright.
Okay, the Temple City Boulevard and arterial.
That would be one, yeah. Pretty much.
Loa Sosa.
Michael.
Loa Sosa.
Only part of, part of Baldwin, though. Now, with these numbers, these are based on your recent surveys.
Correct, correct.
And would not the arterial numbers necessarily be higher because, for example, Rosemead was recently done, Temple City Boulevard was recently done?
Yes.
So, that would be expected, I would think.
Correct.
That's why these numbers are so high. But you indicated that something about we were giving priority to these arterial roads?
Generally speaking, most arterials get a higher priority because they serve a higher volume of cars and trucks. The other is that they are also eligible for federal and state funding, so they, it's easier to fund the repairs on these roads than you would in the residential streets.
And is there no funding for collector or residential roads?
The gas tax is just about the only funding that can go to the residential roads, yes.
Thank you.
Could you go back? I just wanna add a comment.
Yes.
Well, first of all, our policy has been, the last few years, been really focusing on the arterial streets because that's where we get the most funding. But I also wanna point out that if we look at the collector streets, what this pie chart's telling me, that half of our roads are bad. I mean, it's actually over 52%. You add the poor plus the very poor together, it's half of them are bad. If you look at a residential, the picture's even more bleak. Actually, it's 66% either is very poor or poor. So, it's actually two-thirds of our residential streets are actually in poor shape currently.
That is correct.
Any point?
My point is we're really not in very good shape.
I think we could see.
I think the next one would tell, will tell us even more, the next slide.
So, one of the questions that the committee and the staff asked us to look at was, you know, how does Temple City compare? Let's have some context. And so, we picked some neighboring agencies and you can see that, you know, Baldwin Park all the way to the right has an average PC of 81. St. Gabriel is just kind of on par with Temple City, but clearly Temple City is sort of in the bottom third of these collection of roads. The other part I wanted to share with you is that, if you see that dotted line, we did a study last year where we took all the data from 539 cities and counties and we looked at the road conditions and the average was 65. So, even by that measure, Temple City is falling a little bit short of that.
Did we not have the numbers for Rosemead and El Monte?
I don't believe we had updated numbers. I think Rosemead's there.
Rosemead, 75.
Which was the other one you wanted?
Oh, El Monte, okay.
El Monte? We might have it. I don't think I put it on the slide, though. Yeah, I don't see Pasadena or El Monte, you said? If you want it, I can probably get it for you.
No, no, I just was wondering if they, there was a reason why they were not left because they are neighborhoods.
Yeah. If I could just add, when council member Matt and I, we sat on the ad hoc committee, when we first reviewed this data, actually, we were in a little shock. We thought we're much better shape than we are, but looks like we're about the same as St. Gabriel. Of course, St. Gabriel had some advantage if they just repaved certain arterial roads fairly recently, like Las Tunas and St. Gabriel Boulevard and so forth. But still, overall, we're essentially at the bottom of the barrel compared to other cities in St. Gabriel Valley.
So, now that we know the condition of the roads, the next question is, well, how do we fix the streets? So, we look at different types of strategies. We differentiate between what we call preventive maintenance, which is to try and preserve good roads as a preservation policy. And then we look at rehabilitation and restoration, which is basically fixing them after they get to the point where there's structural failures. So, we apply a series, different combinations of these treatments to the roads that we have. And the point here that we wanted to make is that putting the right treatment at the right time is really important. If we don't do anything, let me back up a little bit. When we have a good road, we want to try and maintain it at a fairly reasonable cost. And I like to use the analogy of a car. I have a Toyota. It's about 12 years old and I've got, I think, 180,000 miles on it now. I've been very diligent at changing the oil, getting in for service every 15,000 miles. And if I'm good about it, hopefully this car will, you know, take me a couple hundred thousand miles or more and it'll run a few more years. And maybe by the time my daughter graduates from high school, I can pass it on to her. I can do something different. I can buy a new car and not do anything to it, not run, do any maintenance and run it to the ground and go back and buy another car to replace it. So intuitively, if we look at these two different approaches, you can say that, well, getting the oil changed every 3,000 miles, getting a service, a tune-up every 10 or 15, that's probably the smarter thing to do and that's the most cost-effective thing to do. So, it's the same thing with roads. What we're trying to do in the analysis that we did is that if we have good roads and we try to maintain it and we spend $2 to $3 a square yard to maintain it, makes a lot more sense than not doing anything, waiting till it falls apart, and then reconstructing it at costs of $70 to $80, as much as $80. And we also know that these prices are as of 2018, but it's very dependent on oil prices, which is very volatile. It wasn't that long ago that we saw reconstruction prices up to $100 a square yard or more. But at this point, I think the policy I wanted to encourage the staff and the city council to consider is try to preserve the good roads that you do have.
Margot.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna get a sense of the timing here. I mean, obviously, the percentage of pavement life is a representation of the year of service.
Right.
I mean, going back to my original question before, how long does the pavement, the design, design life? You're talking about 25% or 25 years or so. So, would you say that by the time the first arrow, the left-hand arrow that comes down, about 40%, that would be about the equivalent of seven, eight years?
That's right around the time when we ought to be doing a seal of some sort.
Yeah, so actually, Rosemead Boulevard, we already sealed it. That's why it's such a good shape. And then you wait another 10, 15 years and that's.
What we would like to see on your residential streets is, in the program that we did, we set up a cycle. So, every six, seven years, you would come in with a seal and you would do it periodically. By the time it reaches 20 to 25 years of life, then we might want to look at some sort of restoration treatment. But you wanna try and do a seal at least six or seven years interval.
Right.
I have a question or a comment. So, I don't think anybody would disagree with your analysis here and your analogy, that certainly, I think everything in life, including vehicles, preventive maintenance is the key. So, where did we go wrong? How did, how did we get to where we are now? Is that because we haven't been doing any preventive maintenance or not enough? So, in looking at this report, I agree with pretty much everything you say, but I'm still missing.
So, two things have happened.
I guess you'll get to that as far as what we need to do to get to that point or.
Well, I'll talk about some solutions, but you're asking how did we get here? And let me offer some general observations. Temple City isn't alone. You are part and parcel of the entire country and every, almost every city and county in the United States is facing the same problem. And it really comes from two main things. There's many variables, but it's two main things. The first is the gas tax has been the primary revenue source for road maintenance. If we did not have SB1, the last time the gas tax was raised was 20 years ago. However, in the 20-year interim, construction costs have gone up about five times. So, now we have two things. We have a revenue source, a gas tax, that has declined because of inflation. In the last 20 years, it declined to about half of what it was worth 20 years ago.
And use of electric and.
Correct. We have less consumption, we have inflation, multiple factors. The other part is with construction costs going up five times, so now you have two trends that have diverged. And what's happened is that the council that was here in Temple City 20 years ago may have had enough money to maintain the roads, but you haven't had an increase that's equivalent to five times the construction cost. Your gas tax revenues have not gone up five times in the last 20 years. So, you have not been able to keep up. And I don't say you personally, but cities and counties in general. So, I think that is the overriding factor. So, I think SB1, when Governor Brown signed that back in 2017, in many ways, that is a lifesaver for most of us. But it's still not quite enough. And I will say this about SB1. It was intended, as Senator Beal said, to help maintain the status quo for a short period of time. It was never intended to solve everything. We identified that the backlog in California, cities and counties alone, was gonna be $7 billion a year. SB1 brings in $1.5 billion to the cities alone. So, we still have a shortfall of 5.5. So, in the analysis that we're doing for you today, you will see that we take into account SB1, but also we need to look at other ways to address that shortfall.
Thank you.
So, the rest of the presentation is really how much money?
Actually, if you don't mind going back, I just wanna point out one thing from the previous slide.
This one?
Yeah, no, the one with the curve. You know, for the preventive maintenance, for crack seal and service seal, you're estimating about $3 a square yard. But then again, when it comes to reconstruction, it's like $63 to $71 a square yard.
Correct.
So, it's like, we're talking about 20.
Absolutely.
You know, 1 to 20.
Yes.
20 times increasing cost. And we delayed for another 14, 15 years.
Yes.
And just one quick thing. One of the most common questions we get from residents is why are we fixing the roads that look like they're in good shape?
Right.
And why isn't the road on my street that's falling apart, why isn't that being addressed? And I think a lot of residents have this conception that preservation and reconstruction are equal. But then there's this 30 orders magnitudes of difference when it comes to pricing. And so, sometimes it's hard, difficult to explain that in like a one-minute conversation.
But doesn't it really come down to you have a limited amount of funds? And the further you can spread those funds is why we're fixing the good streets and not the bad ones? But under that line of thinking, and I've had the same problem theoretically in my own mind.
Right.
That really means that the bad streets will never, ever be fixed.
Well, you begin to chip away at it from the bottom because as you keep the good streets good, there's gonna be more money available for the bad streets. But I think in the scenarios that we have run for you, you are in fairly dire straits that you do need an infusion of revenues to try and get to those bad streets.
But I think in some of the scenarios that Margot will be describing, we're actually exploring strategies where there's a front infusion of funds to really address some of those needs. And we are talking about policy.
I think in the report, I saw that upfront infusion, but it didn't speak to going after the bad streets.
Yeah, it will.
It meant going after the good streets still.
It will eventually get to the, get to the bad streets.
I didn't see that in the report.
As you see in the, yeah, but that's part of the strategy.
That's the hope.
Yes, it will.
Yeah, but I think that's what Margot was mentioning, that part of that is also a very important policy decision, is we can consciously make a decision to not repair any of the bad streets or we can try to. There's different like financial implications. Like one example is, because we work, I work at the county, so I know what the county's policy is. They have these different year plans where they actively say, this amount of money we get in a year, we're gonna dedicate to 15% reconstruction. Like, we're gonna rebuild some of the bad roads. But that's, that's a policy decision that has financial impacts.
Correct.
But.
Does the county have a PCI rating?
Yeah.
What is that?
They're at 65.
They're at 65, the average? I'd like to know what the policy of West Covina and Bell are.
Yeah.
How they got to 78.
But I think to your point, Councilmember Chavez, I think you brought a very good point because if you only repair the good streets, where's the parity here as a policy? I mean, everybody pays their taxes and, I mean, at some point, we need to get to the bad streets because, I mean, if you happen to be the one living on a bad street and you gotta ask, well, when is, when am I gonna be taking care of, how come people got good roads, got even better roads? And I will forever be driving on these potholes.
Since I've lived on Freer, we've had our street we paved three times.
Yeah.
It's kind of embarrassing.
Because you live there.
Yeah, I live there. That's a little embarrassing.
Not on my street, but.
Let me share with you, I think, some, we can also look at hybrid policies as well. Redondo Beach, for instance, when we did a similar presentation for them, the council said that they wanted to put aside 10% of the total paving budget to look and attack just the worst streets. But the remaining 90% will be used to optimize and to get the most cost-effective. I mean, ultimately, what we're trying to do is for every single dollar we spend, we wanna get the biggest bang that we can.
Sure.
To put every dollar on the worst streets is probably not the biggest bang. But we can look at an approach, I think, that considers safety issues. If the road has lots of potholes, clearly there are some safety concerns that need to be done. But we also need to preserve the good roads that we do have. So, let me go to the analysis. What we did, and Lisa and her team did a really nice job, I think, of going through a variety of scenarios, is we looked at, the first one was with SB1, the city currently has about 1.4 million a year. And we looked at what it would cost to maintain it and to improve it to different levels. So, let me go through these charts because I think they tell the story a little bit better. There's two pieces of information on this chart. The line that you see is the Pavement Condition Index, which is the PCI. And you can see that with the existing 1.4 million a year, it's going to go up a little bit the first year, but then it really has a gradual deterioration. And by the end of 10 years, we're going to be at around 49. But the more alarming part, I think, are the bar charts. The bar charts are the deferred maintenance or what we call the unfunded backlog. I like to think of this as, these are the roads in town that need to be fixed, but we don't have money to fix. And the trend here is what is critical. The trend is going to go from about $20 million a year and is going to be in 10 very short years, more than double to about $57 million. I'm sorry, 26 to about 57. That's doubling what we have. That is a significant. That is a significant change. What we're saying then is that if we don't do anything, we stay at one point four million, the council that is here ten years from now is going to be faced with a problem that's almost, uh, doubled what it is today.
Ian, Margot, I think we need to point out what that twenty-nine million means. It, it means that we're taking the current street, how we come up with the, uh, how you come up with the deferred maintenance causes, to take all our streets today, at whatever index they are, and bring them all to eighty-three, PCI eighty-three.
Around.
And that's, that's how you come up with a twenty-nine million dollar number.
Yes.
Yes.
PCI of what, eighty-three?
Eighty-three.
That's pretty high.
Eighty-three is what we would consider best management practices, on average. It doesn't mean that every single street's gonna be eighty-three, some may be at a hundred, cause they're recently paved, some may be at sixty or sixty-five after they're sealed. But the average would be around.
Do you know of any city in Southern California that has an eighty-three PSI?
Yes.
Who's that?
Mission Viejo has eighty-eight.
Mission Viejo has a route to the young city though, don't they?
They have actually, um, thirty-year-old residential neighborhoods, um, so they're.
Thirty years, that's all they've been around.
But they're at eighty-eight, Aliso Viejo, a lot of the newer towns.
Anybody else besides Mission Viejo?
Yeah.
Who else?
Um, Aliso Viejo, I think they're at eighty-nine.
Right next door.
Yeah.
So Irvine must be up there, right?
Even younger.
Orange County is at.
Santa Ana?
Santa Ana.
See, Irvine must be up there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Don't you?
But the roads are generally good.
They're gonna go babies right now.
Uh-huh.
Newport Beach, uh, is alarmed because they went from an eighty-three to an eighty-two.
Oh, man.
So, yeah. But there are a number of agencies in LA County that are in the seventies.
Santa Monica, I think, was, um, the high seventies, right?
Ma'am, did we?
So.
This isn't an open forum, Steve, sorry.
So the next scenario we ran, and this was a logical question, I think, that the staff asked, is what do we need to maintain it at fifty-eight? And we need to, not quite double, but almost double the existing budget to about two and a half million a year. And what you can see on this chart now is that the PCI is pretty stable, the deferred maintenance in- in- increases a little bit, um, but not too much. Um, and then if we were to bring in three and a half, three point four million a year, uh, we would be able to stabilize the unfunded backlog, and the PCI would rise to sixty-five, that would be the statewide average. And if we kept going another ten points, um, to go to seventy-five, then we're going to be about four point, we need about four point six million a year. And then finally, uh, eighty, which, which, what we would consider kind of best management practices, uh, you, now you can see those two curves begin to diverge, which is what you want to see, the PCI improving and the unfunded backlog decreasing. Those, those are the trends that you, we want to try and shoot for if we can.
And is that five point two million per year indefinitely?
Uh, it's over the ten years that we look at.
The ten years.
Yes. Now, uh, if we wanted to, let's say, get it to eighty and stabilize and stay at eighty, it probably would be a little bit less, but I don't think we ran that analysis. But we, we could, if you wanted to find out, that.
So even after ten years to stay at eighty, you would still have to stay over around five million a year?
It probably would be less.
Little bit less.
Yeah, it'll be less.
Yikes.
So the part, though, that I, uh, looking at PCI and deferred maintenance is just one metric. There's another metric, and this is the one where, um, y- you probably want to look at, because it depends on, uh, it'll, it'll determine how many calls that residents will make, um, to the council and to the staff. Um, let me back up. So currently, what we said was, you've got about one-third green, uh, good roads, um, a third that are poor, and then about twenty percent that are in fair and a little bit less than that in very poor. If we, in ten years, under the existing budget of one point four million, you can see the picture drastically changes. The first, what we have now done is, we've run an analysis where we're gonna try and preserve your good roads as much as we can. But you're ending up with a two-tiered system, you have a, a system of very good roads, a little bit more than half, but now you also have forty percent of roads that are not in very good shape. And this is probably not something, uh, that you may want to see. But we ran through all the numbers.
Margot, I just wanna go back to scenario one, I mean, we, we did, we, you, you did it for only ten years, but.
Correct.
Had you run it out twenty years, you probably had more than two-thirds red.
Probably.
Yeah.
It would, that, that, the red grows very quickly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, poor streets wouldn't get any better.
No. But, but at some point, you know, like you pointed out, not just, uh, bumpy roads and just breaks on your car, it has to do with, uh, safety as well. Would people trip, fall, and you know, uh, uh, where you'd be able to maintain driving straight and all that, yeah.
We would have almost an entire red ball there.
Could be, yeah.
After so many years.
Absolutely, yeah.
At this rate that we're going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there are agencies that look two-thirds red, I mean, in the state. So you're not as bad as they are.
That's good.
That's good, it is good. Um, but you can see that as we go through all these pie charts, uh, the more money we put in, the, the bigger the green grows, and then the red begins to shrink. Really, the red begins to shrink around, um, in scenario four, uh, which is the, um, I think it was four point some million dollars a year.
Yeah, but, but to, um, uh, Councilmember Chavez's point, I mean, we look at scenario five.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's still some bad roads, it's, uh.
There are still some.
You know, it's just still the red one, but it, it's shrinking. Eventually, we're, we're just, it, it will get to them eventually.
Of course, that's the goal, there's no question of that.
So after we read these scenarios, um, the staff asked us to look at different revenue sources and what those impacts of those revenue sources are. And so we did, um, a couple of hypothetical, um, uh, scenarios for your consideration. The first is that if we had, if we were able to, um, had a parcel tax of about a hundred dollars.
Before you get there, before you get there, you know, the reason why we brought that question was that clearly, we look at the previous slide with all the, you know, different funding scenario, whether you're putting in two million, three million, four million, up to five point two million, clearly, we don't have that kind of money in our city budget.
Correct.
And what we barely now is, um, has a balanced budget. And our, on our, on our, but, and our city budget annually is, you know, no more than twenty million dollars or so. So to add another four million dollars, you're, you're looking at, um, twenty-five percent additional funding that we don't have currently. And our, if you look, also look at the, um, in perspective, what our, what our reserve is, we're about fourteen, six, fifteen million dollar. So to put four million dollar in three years, four years, you would totally deplete our reserves. So obviously, based on the initial analyses that, um, that the firm had brought in and then staff recommend, there's actually just no way that we can sustain it, and these are just all hypothetical funding, um, scenarios. So we asked the question, what can we do? And, and then, and then the next part of the presentation, I think, we talked about different funding scenario where if we have a revenue source, we can address some of these issues. So that's why we have the second half of the presentation.
Thank you. So looking at the, uh, re- uh, raising the revenues by a hundred dollars a parcel, uh, we made several assumptions. Uh, one was that, um, there would be, it would be front-loaded, in other words, we bond against that revenue source and then front-loaded. And you can see in scenario six A to six D, uh, we assume different levels of money that would be upfront. Six A, for instance, assumed that we would have about eight million upfront, and then, um, about one point seven a million a year after that. And you can see on this line, that in the first year, you would have an immediate impact, you would be able to improve things significantly. But then with one point seven, it really begins to drop. Um, similarly, with, um, nine million a year, uh, ten million a year, fifteen million a year, really, there's not a huge difference, uh, in the trends. The biggest difference is that in the first year, you will see an immediate improvement, but the trend after that is, is downhill.
So with, with the additional funding, we'll be addressing some of the lesser, uh, condition streets as well?
Yes, yes, with that kind of funding, yes, a lot of it will be on re- overlays and reconstruction.
Okay.
And one other point to be made, sorry, Margot, just, it, if you're, when, when Margot's going through these funding scenario, to scale for these types of, for these types of funding scenarios, if you're going from a hundred to four hundred, you're still mobilizing, you're still doing all the things you need to do, so when you're thinking about this in the future, you know, there's a lot of considerations, but in terms of scalability, the costs are already embedded to a certain extent from day one, at a hundred dollars, or day four, or the, the next day at four hundred dollars. And so the, the scaling of, 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 of the operating costs are, are still gonna be embedded throughout, if the council even considers, you know, taking to the voters at some point, one of, one of the four scenarios here.
Can I, can I have a quick question? So these, these numbers are obviously based on today's technology and, and.
Construction.
Construction costs, um, things that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Do we anticipate over the next ten years, maybe an improvement in technology that could have an impact on these numbers, or is that something that, that, that we know is coming down, or any way to tell? I mean, ten years is a long time, uh, and I don't know what the technological advances are, are in this particular area. Maybe if we went back ten years to find out what they were then, and have they improved over the last ten years? Have we, have we looked at any of that?
There, there are always, uh, new technologies, and I would say the biggest change in the last five years and, that we've seen, and that, that's moving forward now, are improvements in recycling the existing material. We've seen, um, reconstruction costs drop by as much as thirty or forty percent over conventional remove and replace, just by reusing the material in place. Uh, LA County is a big proponent of recycling, City of LA, same thing. I know when I talked with the Director of Public Works many years ago, City of LA, just when it was getting started, he told me his goal was that fifty percent of their paving projects would be out of recycled material, because that's, and he, he, he was talking about hundreds of millions of, of, of cost savings, and that was the only way he could see to keep up, um, with, with the roads. So outside of, um, recycling, there are always new polymers that are being added to asphalt that make them perform longer. Uh, but I will say that the cost of construction and technology, because we, we use asphalt, is so dependent on the oil industry, that it's very difficult to predict that we will have cost savings. All it takes is a war breaks out in the Middle East, you know, and we see gas prices spike to four, five dollars a gallon again, the same thing will happen with our construction prices. Um, so I sometimes, I tell, you know, my, uh, the engineers I work with, that if I could predict what oil prices were, I would not be an engineer. You know, I'd make a lot more money doing that.
And, and is asphalt the only, uh, material that's available, or is there any discussion of using different types of materials? So we're not as dependent on the oil?
Concrete is the only other alternative to asphalt. Uh, in California, ninety-five percent of the roads are asphalt, um, because, uh, for, for many reasons, uh, but it is the most readily available. If you look at concrete, it's actually more expensive to build a concrete street than an asphalt. So.
And it takes the roll-out commission for a long time.
Right, right.
It, it takes about, uh, twenty-eight days for the concrete to attain full strength.
Your traffic congestion and detours are a big headache to your residents and.
So the materials we used on Temple City Boulevard were sort of a hybrid, weren't they? Uh, a different material than just straight asphalt, weren't they?
It was a traditional cold bill and overlay, so there was.
It wasn't, I thought, because it was a, the softness.
Rubberized, it was rubberized concrete, yeah.
There's, there's some rubberized, but I'd have to defer to Michael, I'm Mr. Forbes.
Does that add to the cost, or take away, or?
Yeah, but, but I don't think rubberized necessarily means it lasts long, it's just more quiet, right?
Rubber, um, retard reflection cracking is more quiet and costs a little bit more.
Costs a little more, but it's not, doesn't mean it lasts longer.
Um, not really.
Yeah, yeah. But there are potential grants that we can give from the county for using rubberized asphalt.
You can get CalRecycle grants, up to about two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So we ran, um, various additional scenarios at two hundred dollars, um, first at a hundred, then at a hundred dollars a par- a two hundred parcel. And you can see now, the curves looks a little bit better, right? It's the, a little bit flatter, um, it doesn't drop down quite as quickly, so we're seeing that, um, but it's still dropping. Um, and then the next one we looked at was the three hundred, and now we're beginning to see some differences. At three hundred, we're actually gonna see some improvements, uh, from the initial, uh, jump to about sixty-seven. It ends up around, here in this case, at seventy, and we can go through the rest of these. So now we're looking at somewhere high sixties, low seventies, at about three hundred dollars a parcel. And then at four hundred, then we really get somewhere, and you can see that these charts now begin to show some significant improvement. We're going to be in the high seventies or mid to high seventies, uh, at the end of the, um, analysis period. Um, so the other part of the charts that we have are these deferred maintenance. Uh, remember I said that, uh, that's the unfunded backlog? Uh, at a hundred dollars a parcel, you can see that deferred maintenance still really grows, there's not much difference between, um, each one of these scenarios. At seven, at two hundred dollars, now you can see it's beginning to stabilize a little bit. Um, at three hundred, we're beginning to see some drops, and then at four hundred, we're really attacking most of all, if not all, of the bad streets in town. They are going to be addressed, um, at this level of, of funding. Um, and so if you look at the pie charts again, you can see a scenario six at a hundred dollars, you still got a big portion of red in your network. Um, at two hundred, that red becomes, the shrink, the green is going, growing significantly. Um, at three hundred, shrinking a little bit more, and then with four hundred, you can see now, we really don't have any poor roads in town. We're really looking at three-quarters that are good, and a little bit of poor, uh, and fair.
So essentially, it addresses all the bad roads as well?
Correct, correct.
And also, just for context, this, um, when, when we assume this infusion of money upfront, that takes the form of, I guess, maybe Mr. Cook, or what, what would that, that would be like a bond, that would be, how would that work?
Uh, there's gonna be several different things that we would wanna explore, the private placement, uh, checking the bond market itself, because we don't have a credit rating as a city. Um, but I would look similar to what we did with the redevelopment, former redevelopment agency, do a private placement. So literally, a bank would loan us the money at a pretty advantageous rate, as to what the market is doing. So we'd, we'd, we'd be exercising, uh, a lot of different scenarios, but when you have a secured funding source that the bondholders or the debt holders can guarantee, okay, that's that money, I've, I've got that payment in hand, you, we, we would be able to find, but we'd have to explore a lot of different scenarios of, of how to, how to play that out.
Cause I, I, I think in, when Margot was presenting the different cash infusions upfront,
Mm-hmm.
your annual cost was also considering the fact that you're using some of that money to pay back a bond that you're borrowing.
Yes.
So the more you're infusing upfront, the higher your annual cost for the same sort of target, right?
Or the less money there is available.
Yeah, the, less money available to repave your streets, so.
So combining this, and as Margot presented before, all the other funding sources combined. So it's all, all, every, everything's in the basket.
Got it, okay.
So to really wrap up, I think we just wanted to quickly summarize, you know, um, again, you know, the street network is probably of one of the biggest of asset va- values, um, and in the city, uh, we think it's about, uh, a little bit over a hundred million dollars. Um, the bad news is that this asset is not in very good shape, uh, the existing dollars to, is not really sufficient to maintain it. And, um, what, I, I, I won't repeat everything, but I think in terms of, uh, new revenues, we, we were looking at at least two hundred, just to maintain things, and the three to four hundred to really improve, um, the conditions, um, of, of the street network. Um, and then finally, I think we just wanted to leave you with some policy considerations, you know, um, there are, I'm sure, uh, things, considerations for the commercial, uh, for sustainable communities, for the local economies that, um, the council may want to look at. Um, I think both, not just the residents, but the visitors and businesses, uh, all demand some certain level of quality of life, including smoother rides. And, uh, potholes, I know, are becoming actually in some cities where they're very prevalent, actually, a, a liability or a risk because of the amount of claims, uh, that are being paid, uh, that takes away from the paving budget. Uh, Oakland is actually one such city, where they're now looking at the risk analysis of the cost of potholes, the cost of bad roads. So, um, finally, I think, you know, um, I'd like to close that, uh, you know, our grand, our parents and our grandparents built a very extensive infrastructure, not just in Temple City, but really nationally. And, um, what we as taxpayers, we have a, I think, a certain responsibility, see what we can do to try and maintain that as much as possible. So thank you for your engagement and your interest and your many, many questions, which I really appreciate.
You don't think we're gonna let you get off free, do you?
Yeah, of course not. I, I, I like people who ask me questions, shows that you're interested.
You did a very good job too, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave. Council, does council have any more questions, William? No? Councilmember, you, do you have any more questions?
Um, no, but we asked many during the ad hoc meetings.
I was gonna say.
And, um, but I have to say, this is a great, great study.
I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so other cities, in order to, um, get the income, the revenue, they have put tax measures or.
Sales tax, a parcel tax.
Sales tax, parcel tax.
Yes, usually some sort of a tax, and then they bond against it.
And how many, uh, cities have recently done a, uh, sales tax me- measure or a parcel tax to maintain the streets? Would you happen to know that?
Oh, scores, I mean, in California alone, um, almost every city I know that we've talked with that has, um, bad roads. I mean, in California alone, um almost every city I know that we've talked with that has um bad roads have looked at ways of either a sales tax or a parcel tax of some sort to try to bond against.
And were the majority of those passed in the cities?
Yes, a lot of them have passed in California. Um well, LA County, of course, right? I mean, the 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 quarters and sales taxes measure are, no MM, I think is what it was. There there always, every ballot measure, there's usually some sort of a a a parcel or usually a sales tax measure.
Right. And you know, I'm so grateful for the presentation because I think for the public, our residents, they'll get a much better understanding of where the city stands as far as what we need to do and what we can do with the resources that we have. And you know, like potholes and bad streets are are a big complaint. Nobody likes to drive on those. But it's always a challenge when you say, well, would you be willing to to pay? But I think this definitely shows that indeed a partnership has to exist in this city with the budget and and the monies we have to maintain good streets. It definitely has to be a partnership or we're never going to have this win-win situation where, you know, we we feel like we're doing a great job as a city improving our streets and our residents are happy driving on them. So um I think it clearly shows that it needs to be in partnership with our residents. So thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Chavez.
I've asked most of the questions that I had. So other than the sales tax and the parcel tax, I know that there were a couple of other recommendations that you made regarding potential funding sources, correct?
Um other cities have looked at um um hotel trends, T O Ts, transient occupancies.
Unfortunately, that leaves us out.
Yeah, you don't have too much of that. Um another source could be um uh truck impact fees. If you had like Irwindale, for instance, they have a lot of trucks going through because of the quarry. And so they have um a a a revenue source from the trucking. Um with the thing you're working with, um I forgot the name of the city, they're looking at a a parking space, a dollar amount per parking space, and I forgot which agency, Commerce, was it Commerce?
No, it's it's a, I'm not supposed to be
Oh, okay, all right.
But it's an agency in LA County who's actually looking at taxing trucks because they park on the city streets or on uh parks, lots that they maintain.
We've even had cities work with um um the garbage the garbage franchise fee to get to divert a portion of those revenues to road maintenance. So I think a lot of cities have been extraordinarily creative in in coming up with looking at different sources of revenue.
And I think we're gonna be talking about that later tonight, but uh so um and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that both parcel tax and sales tax are, is that a um two-thirds vote?
No, uh well, it depends on how you structure them. So parcel tax, yes, is two
I'm sure you'll kind of
Yeah, we can we can cover that shortly.
Okay, um my my only question about the tax, of course, is that um I think our 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 task is to convince those that, you know, that don't, that live on those streets that are very in poor condition, what incentive they have for for um voting for this. Now, I kind of heard a little bit in that the incentive would be that under at least the three or four hundred dollar attack amount per year, we will eventually get to those streets um at some point.
Right.
Under the other scenarios, never gonna happen, basically.
Yeah, absolutely, so threshold is really about three to four hundred dollar, otherwise it's we would not address
We're just kinda spinning our wheels, basically. Okay.
That's very good.
All right, um and there's been to mention here, but S B one and the Prop C funds, are we gonna talk about that tonight too or?
That's a that's a separate, that's a separate discussion, but that's the bundle of funding that Ms. Yap and Ms. Send from N C E, along with, and I neglected, Michael Forbes, Mr. Forbes and Ali Khyer were really instrumental in helping the team here put this report together. Um is just the bundle of funding we have now.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question. With the tax, would that cover for construction and maintenance? We could use it on anything that had to do with the with the roads, correct?
Yes, we we include the preventive maintenance as well in those dollars that you see up there.
Okay, that was my only question. Were there any other questions?
Admin costs as well.
Pardon?
Administration costs, staff time, all that soft cost included, yes.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna open up to public comments. I have Steve Stafford.
Mayor Fish, Mayor Potem, Pro Chavez, council members, city staff. Um I'd like to 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 suggest the the sales tax. Um other cities are are having to do that. And I don't know about four hundred dollars, is that four hundred dollars on to your additional on your tax bill? You know?
Yes.
That's a lot. And I don't know if people would would pay that. You know, that's, it's gonna need to be explained, all laid out for them and and like a of like a little package to show them what it's gonna pay for and explain how how it's gonna work. When you're pulling that kind of money, they're gonna want some explanation. There are a lot of streets around here that are in real bad shape. Where I live, the the street to get to my street, Morella, and you go to Nadine, and they're they're all in bad shape. You know, and you go Golden West, Cloverly, there's a lot of them that are in bad shape. I like to see something happen and what about a fee when you pull a permit? Like a like a five dollar or two dollar fee on the permit to help pay for repaving some of these streets? You know, I've seen some cities do that now and but I would like to see see the tax look at and and other fees that we could we could get to help pay for the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any additional? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to close public comments if there's any, Jerry.
Good evening, council members, Jerry Jambezen. Uh in looking at the report, I guess, that Margot had presented, I find it kind of hard to believe that San Gabriel is on a par with Temple City as far as uh, you know, street PCI or whatever it's called.
PCI.
Uh I remember even a couple of years ago, them saying that they were fifty million dollars behind on uh infrastructure as far as road repairs go. So I don't think uh it quite measures up, but I'll go along with it.
I think they got a big push out of the arterial arterial numbers because of Las Tunas and San Gabriel, which are their two main streets that are totally redone.
And parts of Del Mar too.
Yeah, so I think that helped the numbers big time.
Right, okay.
And Valley Boulevard.
Then I remember, I guess, when the county was doing Rosemead Boulevard from Kalida up to Colorado Boulevard, they used that rubberized asphalt. And I'm telling you, it really makes a difference that it's quiet and it's a smooth ride. So I don't know if we used it or not, but We did? Okay.
For Temple City Boulevard.
Oh, okay.
No, for Rosemead as well.
Oh, we did?
I'd like to commend you for paying attention to this. Cause I remember sitting in this room probably twenty, thirty years ago when the council was really busy trying to increase their uh reserves and would not spend a whole lot of money on infrastructure and deferred maintenance. So I'm glad that you're paying attention to this, so I appreciate that. My last comment
Fortunately, we're answering for those uh those actions now.
Yes. I'd like to be educated on one last thing tonight. In the summertime, if you walk out on the street just fifty feet from here and it's warm and hear the cars going by, it's like clickety-clack, clickety-clack, clickety-clack. And I'm wondering what that is? It just sounds like things beating each other and like the road is separated. And I don't know whether it's about, but maybe somebody smarter than me knows what it's about. And is it the street coming apart or what it is? I don't know, but thank you.
Out here in front of the park?
Uh just right here, for instance, yeah.
On Kaufman?
Yes. Yeah.
Kaufman's pretty beat up though.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comments? Okay, I'm gonna close public comments. Additional council comments?
No.
No?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I wanna thank um
I think she left, Margot?
Yeah, Margot, but but I think a lot of leadership came from our staff, um our Director Forbes and our City Manager. We sent meetings with them and actually I had a couple of, I think, a couple more um ad hoc meetings. So I want to thank them for what they have done and and also I appreciate their methodology here. I don't know if anybody remember, I mean, we talk about these ten-year cycles. I only, if anybody remember, this report that was done in two thousand nine, exactly ten years ago. So essentially, we 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 studied our pavement ten years ago. We had a report about, other than just doing a lot of very cost-effective um getting many bu- many banks were about kind of uh deferred maintenance. We haven't really addressed the core issues that was brought up ten years ago in our two thousand nine report. So I would urge the council and also our fellow citizens to really truly look at what we have the how what we need to do as from a policy standpoint with our with the biggest asset in the city. It is far too easy for us to do nothing. Um I mean, I think um Councilmember Chavez pointed out, the previous council really focused on, you know, putting money in the reserve and when it would could have been, it's like the the report pointed out, one to twenty, that kind of ratio of uh patching it up, sealing it versus reconstruction. So I think it's far too easy for us to do nothing. But I think as a prudent city council, as a prudent citizen, we really need to address this issue because as a study after study, two thousand nine to nineteen, so I just pointed out, is it is, it would cost us a lot more um to to repair our roads. And I think in in addition to what Margot's analogy of fixing fixing up her car versus buying a new car, I would also offer up that, you know, if you have a hole in your roof, you get, it's much easier to go down to Home Depot and get a bucket of Henry and put it up there rather than waiting for the roof to leak and and, you know, destroying your drywall, destroying the roof structure, maybe even a caving in down the road. I think it's only makes sense for us to start addressing the road condition that we have. We've been doing a very good job and hats off to staff for really doing I mean, we done the best thing we could under the circumstances of the money that we have and which mainly in this in sealing and and taking care of our good roads. Um but I would venture to say we haven't, just based on the current scenario, based on the study, we would never catch up. As a matter of fact, if we wait for another ten years, it's gonna go down to as we thought, maybe all red, maybe two-third red. And and um we're gonna have liability issues, um cars will be, you know, will be, that shape is just unpleasant. I think it's a nice community that we have in the in our city. We would need to have good roads to to match that. So I would say that we definitely need to take this report to heart and really look at different funding measures, be that parcel tax or others. I think sales tax will not get us where we need to be. Um I think we need to look at the nature of our e- economy in the in the in our city because we're not a strong sales tax city. Sales tax, you know, you can add five percent, although you can't under state law. Uh five percent more uh state tax is still not gonna get you there. We need to look at what we are and what we can really, uh what would be the most effective way to generate that funding source. And um and I think we talked about, again, how we address the bad roads, like Councilmember Chavez pointed out. And I I think, just like he concluded, until we get to the three hundred, four hundred dollar um per parcel level, we would never be able to quite address the the bad streets. And to me, as a as an as as an elected official, I do worry about the parity issue. Why folks that live on good streets always get good, better streets? If I live on a bad street and my street happened to be not very good, I would never get to see my street being repaved again. And and I that that always troubled me. Um we've been, we have this situation, we studied this back in two thousand nine, and we still to this day have not really addressed the streets that are in bad shape. I mean, we're very, I don't think we're with a few exceptions. We haven't grinded them up, we haven't really, you know, do our uh overlay and 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 reconstruction. So I I think it's time that this council and the time for our citizens to act to readdress this issue. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sturges, you don't have anything left? Councilman, Ramon?
Thank you, Mayor Fish. Yeah, so it's it's been really eye-opening being on the Standing Committee with Councilmember you uh over the last couple of years. And uh one of the things that jumped out at me is, um I mean, I I know you you were mentioning the two thousand nine report. Um I guess I'm more familiar with the twenty thirteen report that Harrison Associates did. Um and I think if you look at the two side by side, you'll see like a world of difference between what was just presented to us versus what was done in twenty thirteen. Um not just the methodology, but the level of detail. By all measures, uh what we have before us here is a lot more rigorous. Uh I would say much more accurate information to uh to sort of gauge where we are. And it it just occurred to me like for all the years that I've lived here growing up, I've always lived on a bad street. So I'm trying to think of, like, my parents are on Doreen.
Right.
And I don't remember the last time we've had any work done on Doreen since nineteen ninety-two. Um and it's funny because my mom would joke about how there's like holes in front of their driveway. And my son would say there's a hole somewhere and then he'd come back in front of our, uh her her house and say grandma has a hole in the in front of her street. And so like even even like my son, who's three and a half, notices these things. Um and so from a, I think from a perception standpoint, you know, a ma- majority of our city is residential. And so it's no coincidence that all the failed streets happen to be in the residential areas. Um and I think what Margot had pointed out earlier is actually, I thought, was something I didn't learn until I got into this is the the funding disparity in terms of what's available for the major roads like Rosemead and Las Tunas and Baldwin. And that's why we were able to do Temple City Boulevard two years ago was because of the um, I can't remember the the exact name of the funding, but it was a state, state source of funding, I believe, a state highway, transportation, something, something. Yeah, and and so then we're we're kind of like staring down the barrel of, we we keep talking about the low hanging fruit, right? Every every time, over the last couple of years, when Councilmember you and I would come back with a report from the Standing Committee, we keep talking about how, oh, this year we were able to do all of our preservations, which was the the stuff that cost the least. And then so, you know, at that time, it seemed like, oh, we're making progress, we're making progress. And I think we're finally at that point where, all right, we've done all the low hanging fruit and now how do we tackle the the really tough stuff? And so I think the timing of this report is is nice because it coincides with that sort of crossroads and and sort of both where our road network lies now and also what we as policymakers have to kind of consider moving forward. So I I I do wanna echo Councilmember Yu's points, which he, I I appreciate you sort of bringing that to light throughout the presentation because it's very easy to kind of get lost in these engineering numbers, these PCI's, you know, they they all they they, they sound a little detached, right? It's just, it's just a number, it's just a number. But when you go out in front of your house and you stare at the pothole in front of your your home, then, you know, that that translates into something a lot more tangible, right? Um and and so really, when when residents that talk to me complain about roads that are failed and why we're only fixing the good streets, it's a tough conversation to have because because the, the short answer is we don't have enough money. And then the, the, the even more tougher answer is where, where do we get it? So, so yeah, that, that three hundred to four hundred parcel is sticker shock to me because before this was even done, I hadn't even really thought that far out into sort of attaching a number to, to that. You know, all of us here, I know we pay property tax, so we know what that means, right? When you get that bill every year and you're staring at that and you realize, okay, that's, that's what it's gonna take to actually make progress, I, I mean, it's, it's nothing to sneeze at. But, um, yeah, but I, I think, um, like we, we had the car analogy that Margot brought up. The deferred maintenance thing she kinda went over, but some, I think that's a little easy to misunderstand. I, I try to think of that as like credit card debt. It just keeps growing. There's interest. And then, you know, it, you get to the point where your road, you need to reconstruct it, all of a sudden it's like having twenty, twenty-five percent interest on your credit card that being added on every, every month and it just keeps compounding and compounding until you get to a point where you really can't do much about it. So, so yeah, I, I, I appreciate the, the information we have, but we, we do have some tou- tough decisions to, to look at, um, moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. First of all, I just wanna also thank William and Vince for their work. I know that they put a lot of time and effort into this and working with staff. I thought the report was an excellent report. It was very well laid out. Gave us the full scenario, gave us a lot of different options, gave us a lot to think about, I think. And, and that's really kind of where now we need to take over. Just a couple of things, I mean, I'm not sure, um, you know, I think one of the policy decisions is, where do we wanna be in ten years? Is, is being an eighty a realistic goal? Is that something that we wanna do or do we wanna take it in increments? I, you know, I don't know, you know, I think that's a policy decision. The other thing that came to my mind in going and hearing everybody talk also was, I know there are other funding sources out there, but they come with conditions that we saw within the past, like bike paths and things like that, that you need to put in with those. There's, money's out there, but then we have to know what is the cost of that? And is our community willing to, to go with that? And we, we saw a little taste of that, if you recall, a few years ago when we were talking about Las Tunas.
And then that, that would be just a certain section and not citywide.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, you know, and so it, it is limited, there's no question. So, you know, I, I tend to agree with the ultimate out, uh, outcome and I think the recommendation of, of what I've heard so far, and that is, we, we can't afford to stay where we are. There's something we need to do. And where that goes and how that happens, of course, is something that we're probably gonna be discussing over the, the next few meetings and, and get, get going on this and, and, um, because we can't afford, I think, to leave that legacy for ten, twenty years from now, thirty years from now. We wouldn't be doing our job, I don't think, as a, as a council to just pass that on to, to the future generations to, to have to worry about. So it's something we need to worry about now. So no more low, no more low, low hanging fruit? Time to buy the ladder, I guess, huh? Get up on it and, uh, figure out what we're gonna be able to get to, so.
Great analogy.
Okay, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to agree with all of my colleagues on this issue. I think, um, unfortunately, it's a long time coming. I think with this report, it is just reality of the future. I do think the key will be to educate our residents. I did wanna ask is, if this report was going to be available online for our residents?
It could available online.
Okay. It is a big, it is a big report. I, I understand that. Oh, sorry about that. Sorry about my phone going off. I don't see, really see another option. I do not, I do not, uh, um, think that we should really wait any longer. We all know that construction costs increase weekly, um, especially with, when she said with the oil prices, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what the prices will be in six months. We don't know what it will be in a year or five years. So, um, the fees will con, will continue to go up and we have to do something. Now, it's hard. It's really hard to implement a, a tax or to start a bond. And there may be some people that are not gonna agree with it. But these are the tough decisions that we have to do and we have to do them for the good of the community. And I can only hope that our residents, when they have quest, questions, will seek out the answers and not make a judgment before they find out the facts of why this is coming about and why we are, are exploring this option. That we're, you know, we're not, we're not doing it to upset anyone. We're not doing it, we're doing it because we have to. Because we've been entrusted to take care of this community and roads are a big part of this community. And like I said, it's just going to get more expensive. Three, four hundred dollars a year, that's a lot of money for some people. It is a lot of money and I understand that. And, and I'm not saying I want that. I wanna explore other options, of course. We have a lot of other options, but we have, this is the time now. We can't wait any longer. And that's just kind of the way I feel. Do we have any other council comments?
Madam Mayor, just one last comment and then I appreciate what you just said. I mean, you talk about three, four hundred dollar parcels, a lot of money and, and, and everybody will agree with that. However, we gotta look at the alter, the alternative. We don't actually make a, uh, an effort to address it. I mean, we studied it before, two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen. I mean, we studied this, we studied it again and we shelved this report instead. But the inevitable result is that the three hundred, four hundred dollar is gonna turn to the eight hundred, nine hundred, thousand dollar per parcel. If we don't address it, I, and I dare say, in a simple, you know, five, seven years, it's gonna go to, you know, it's gonna double or, or, so.
And I do agree with Councilmember Mann that, you know, we have done a very good job of doing what we can and what we have the money to afford in our budget, but we have exhausted that.
Right.
And now we are at the time where we have to make a tough decision. It's not a decision I particularly want to make, but it's a decision we will have to make. But again, I do think that the residents, um, you know, it's, it, it is the responsibility of the residents to find out why we are doing this and why we are discussing this. And I'm hoping that they will, they will seek that out. I know we have all of the answers, not all the answers, but all of the answers to this particular, um, issue. I know that we are all available. I know our City Manager is available. I know, uh, Mr. Forbes is available for questions. So I'm just hoping that if it does come down to a tax or it does come to, down to something where we do have to ask the residents, that they will try to understand the spot that we are in and that we are just trying to improve the quality of life for them.
I think, and, and that's the task at hand is to, you know, educate and
Exactly.
educate the public as much as you can and
That, that's all we can hope for.
That's all you can try and do.
I think, you know, my, my experience in, whenever you're asking people to pay, they have, two things they're gonna wanna know, well, what am I gonna get out of it? And, you know, what value is it to me? You know, one way of looking at this too, and I was just thinking is that, you know, fortunately in Temple City, you know, because of the city that we have and the home values, we've been lucky that they have actually been going up, different from a lot of cities in our surrounding area. You know, um, you know, parcel tax of three to four hundred dollars is basically, you know, a dollar a day. I would say that the fair market value of our homes in Temple City probably increase every year ten times that amount. So it's all relative and, 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 and I agree that, you know, I'm not saying that, that paying three or four hundred dollars is, is easy, it's the right thing to do. It's certainly, um, you know, anytime you float that out in whatever you call it, it's gonna be difficult for many people to, to take. But you're right, we have to convince, uh, this is the right way to do it and, and, you know, make, make people understand that, that, that it is, that there is a bigger picture out there and that we, you know, that, uh, that we're all investing together, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Brian, the, um, if it's a parcel tax, do you do a parcel tax that is specific for this item?
Do you mind if I answer that question during the next item coming up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, no other council comments, correct? Can I get a motion for this item? To receive and file? No? No motion?
Well, I can make a motion. I can make, I can make a motion. So, Madam?
Okay. Well, hold on a second. Do I need a motion?
No.
Depending on what, what I'm proposing. What I'm proposing, you know, Madam Mayor, I, I propose that, uh, I move that we receive and file the updated report and also direct the City Manager to come back in the future with, uh, some funding suggestions.
Second?
Can a roll call please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chavez?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mayor Fish.
No, you're still answering to that yet.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will now return to our regular agenda order. We will continue with item number six, public comments. Public comments on, not listed on the agenda.
Why is that going off?
Mine went off too. I have Meiling, right? Meiling Howington?
Hamilton.
Howington?
Hamilton.
Hamilton.
It's, it's a very challenging name. My name's Meiling Hamilton. I'm the new, uh, children's librarian at Temple City Library.
Oh, welcome.
And I am here in lieu of Jing Lee, who's usually here, my manager. Um, she had something else to do tonight, so I'm here to introduce myself.
I think she knew that we were gonna put this off till later.
Yes, well, possibly. Um, so I have been at the library about three months and in California about nine months.
Welcome.
I was previously in Virginia Beach, working at the library over there as a children's librarian as well. So, um, I've been a librarian before coming here. The other reason that I am here is to go over, um, just briefly our April programs and I believe that you all have calendars, yes? Um, and I'm not gonna talk about all of them, just some highlights. This Thursday, the fourth, we have a bilingual storytime that, um, Jing is actually leading. She started it last month and it's a English and Chinese storytime for, um, all families. No restriction on ages. This Saturday is our countywide book sale. All of the libraries in the county are participating. In Temple Cities, uh, the time that we're gonna hold the book sale on Saturday is ten AM to three PM.
That's this Saturday?
That is this Saturday, the sixth. Also on Saturday, we have a program for adults about becoming a lazy gardener.
I love that.
And, um, it's, um, learning beginning gardener techniques in economical water-saving irrigation systems. Um, so that is for adults from twelve to one thirty PM. Our regular citizenship classes that have been going on in the library for a while, they're starting their new session, um, on Tuesday, the ninth. And then, um, we also have some newer, um, adult classes, conversation classes, for English learners. And those are our Beginning English Phonics for Adults and our English Learner Conversation Club. Those started last month, but they're continuing and we've had pretty good turnout for those. And on Saturday, the thirteenth, next Saturday, is our Spring Apalooza, which I've been told is an annual event. So we're gonna try and switch it up a little bit. And we're having letters on all of our eggs, so I'm having the kids look for the letters that spell out read. So they only need to find four eggs and hopefully that will, um, make the process take a little bit longer and make it a little more enjoyable for them as well. So children will be getting some small prizes as well as a book if they spell out the entire letter. And then we also have some planned spring crafts. And then, um, Saturday, twentieth, is Dia de los, um, la, 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 Dia de los Niños or Dia de los Libros. And we are celebrating that with a balloon storytime and a, our activity with Mexican folk art flowers. So those are some highlights of our programs.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening again. I'd like to commend our new children's librarian. I met her for the first time, I guess, a week ago Saturday when the Royal Court was at the library for their talent show and she just made it wonderful, so I appreciate that. I have a question. The new sales tax that was instituted starting yesterday for out-of-state businesses that sell in California, they're required now to collect sales tax. Will that be a boon to Temple City? Uh, or does it all go to California?
Can we address that?
I would be willing to guess on that. And I can, can you imagine what the answer would be?
Yes.
Brian? It's a bit of a complicated answer, but there's what's called pooled and there's point of sale in the city where the transaction takes place. And then there's pooled, uh, sales tax collection that is distributed between all the cities and all the counties in California, based on out-of-state transactions. So yes, there will, it will, there will be probably an increase, but it'll be incremental and almost, you can think of it almost like as a per capita allocation of what that, of what that distribution will be. So for example, a big corporation sells a big thing out of state, sold here, goes into the county pools, called the county, each county has a pool. State, there's a statewide pool and a county pool and it's distributed. The largest county, the largest contributor to the county pool, as you may guess, is Amazon. And because of the types of transactions that take place that are not point of sale to a specific city. So, um, will there be an increase? Probably. How much? I, we, we'd probably sit down with our sales tax consultant to give a, get somewhat of a guess, but it's not gonna be some huge financial boon at the end of the day.
Now, does that mean that the city of El Monte, since they have basically three Amazon centers in their city now, are gonna see a big increase in tax dollars?
No, that's be, uh, because that's not necessarily where the point of sale transaction is taking place.
That's just distribution.
It's just distribution. If there's point of sale or business, business-to-business sales, those would then, those would be, those are, that, that transaction would be credited to that agency.
This is, pool sale is redistributed by population, generally speaking.
My recollection, yes, generally that's, that's the way the pool works.
So, so El Monte being twice as big as Temple City would get.
Will get more.
Twice as much.
Thank you. It's always fun coming here and learning new things, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I just had a question for the librarian. Um, welcome. I was just wondering, has the library ever thought of doing a Mandarin learning conversation club?
Thank you.
I'm not positive, as I haven't been there very long and I am mostly focused on children's things. However, I know that to have a Mandarin conversation club, we would need somebody to somewhat lead it. Our English conversation clubs are currently being led by a professor from, I don't remember where she's from. But she's offering her services to us for free, actually, and, and free, actually, and, and she's leading the, she has a whole curriculum that she's set up, and she's leading the conversation clubs. So possibly, but we would have to find somebody that would be willing to teach it perhaps, or at least to kind of lead it.
Okay, thank you.
How exactly, how exactly does that work, the, the conversation club?
Well, I think it's-
It's like a free class, or?
Well, it's like kind of conversational Spanish, when I took that at PCC, so it's not so much about like the grammar and how to write it, it's more just how to converse with someone. So some very basic terminology would learn to speak it. Like, so when we go to many, like, you know, Chinese or Asian events, they always ask us to come up, and it would be nice to be able to have some conversational knowledge. I mean, I think it's important to-
Yeah, it would be very useful.
But they don't speak too well. But I think it would be fun to learn, you know, some basic, I, like, I know how to say xie xie, so xie xie.
You just don't know, they laugh at our Chinese. That part you don't know.
Thank you, and welcome.
I'll talk to Jing, and I'll, I'll see if I can talk her into leading it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And by the way, she's also come to our youth committee already.
Oh, I know.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. No more public comments? I'm going to close public comments. Move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion.
Motion to approve?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You're pulling.
Pulling something?
Yeah, I am.
Pulling something.
If any member of the council or person in the audience wants to discuss any matter, please add, please address them at this time. Is there anyone in the audience? I'd like to pull item seven E, amendment number, number one, to enterprise vehicle lease and maintenance agreement.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, you'll have to take public comment on this, but we'd like to postpone this item. There's a couple of things that came up after the posting of the agenda that we need to address and, and provide you fully, so apologize for that. But if you could, if you wouldn't mind moving this to the, making a motion, moving it to the next meeting, and it was posted, so you will have to take some public comments.
Motion to move item seven E to our next calendar date.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public co, or do we have any council comments? Public comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chavez?
Ye, yes.
Mayor Fish.
Yes. Now I need a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the remainder?
Okay. Any council comments? Public comments? Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item eight, public hearing, none, unfinished business, none, new business. Agreement with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for animal control, shelter, and licensing services.
Mr. Forbes will be giving this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Tonight, we're asking for, I don't have a presentation, just talking. This will be a quick one. We're seeking direction from the city council tonight for staff to move forward with discussions with the Humane Society to extend our agreement with them under a different price structure, starting with next fiscal year. As the council may remember, we entered into an agreement with them in 2016 for an initial term of three years with possible optional one-year extensions beyond the initial three years. The, the contract as it is now has a fixed annual cost escalator of four percent built into it. The Humane Society has contacted us and let us know that they do not wish to extend the agreement as it is currently structured past June 30th of this year because the, the four percent annual escalator is no longer adequate to meet their expenses. They cited a number of issues such as the increased minimum wage and just general increased costs in, in providing their services and operating the facility. Rather than going out for an RFP, we're recommending just continuing on with the Humane Society at this time. The city of Rosemead recently issued an RFP for animal control services and did not receive any responses other than from the Humane Society, and they received feedback from the other organizations in this area, including the county, that they are all at or near capacity at this time and are not really interested in taking on additional clients.
Did we review that RFP from Rosemead that-
I have-
Is it, is it, would it be similar to something that we would seek? I mean, I don't know what the terms of that are if you were, maybe there's a reason why they turned, nobody would bid on it. It's different from our situation.
They were seeking, they provide some of their own animal control services, but they were seeking shelter services, and I believe, I don't remember if they had licensing services, but definitely shelter services, but that's-
Even less than what we're getting, I guess, probably.
Yes, yeah, they, they provide full service for us.
Yeah.
So, so we're recommending at this time, we've, we've been pleased with their service, and we'll have to obviously discuss the costs further with them, but we believe that the costs we will get from them will be comparable or less than what we would be able to get elsewhere. So we're recommending that we continue with them for now, and we would bring back, once we come to terms with them on a new price arrangement, then we would bring that agreement back to council for your consideration prior to, to June 30th, when the current contract expires.
So, so we're good until June 30th of this year?
Yes.
So the recommendation would be, or the, or what you're looking for, I believe, is, is to, to go forward from here and negotiate with them for the next or upcoming year?
Correct. Yes.
Not necessarily to say, okay, we agree to your 28%.
Correct. We're, we're asking you just for direction to negotiate, not to approve any dollar amount tonight.
And I, I'm assuming that their, their proposal for an increase does not also come with an increase in any services?
Presumably not. That's what we'll be discussing with them.
Does it come with a decrease in services?
No, I, I, I mean, we, the services that we get from them are, it's, it's fairly established. I mean, they, they issue all the licenses, they pick up all the animals, they handle all the complaints. So their workload only adjusts as, you know, the community's needs adjust.
I always thought that they had a lot of volunteers, but they're saying that one of their increases is in their, in their wages that they're paying. But I was understanding that they had a lot of volunteers there, but I don't know, maybe they don't.
They do rely on volunteers, but for example, they, they do have administrative staff in the office that's paid, and their animal control officers are paid. Some of the veterinary techs that they have are paid, so they, they do have some costs.
I believe most of their staff is volunteer, but they do have some paid staff. I don't know how many.
I would like to see as part of the negotiation with them, and I can understand the costs are going up, I appreciate that. But in any negotiation, I would want to know what we're going to be getting back as well, other than just say, we're going to charge you more money for the same services we've been providing. I'll tell you, one of the things that I still hear from a lot of people is the licensing and rabies clinic that we used to have here in the park. They miss it, and people are still upset that they have to go over there to get that done. And another couple of, another thing that I've been hearing is that that we've been, that people have been paying their license fees, but they don't get anything back from San Gabriel. Like, we used to get a little tag and things like that. We, do they not provide that anymore? Or is it just in their system that proof that we have a license through them? Like, I don't know.
Yeah, they-
That was changed or something, because every year we used to always give a tag to the pet owner once they renewed it.
Yeah, they've, they've switched to a system similar to Pasadena Humane Society and others where their, a tag is not issued every year anymore, and that's just primarily a cost issue. There's a tag issued once at the beginning, and then beyond that, you're just, you, you're paying your annual renewals, but you don't receive a new tag.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other council questions?
I do. Mayor Fish?
Absolutely.
So I, I know in, they're stating that some of the factors contributing it, contributing to the 28% increase is minimum wage and other things. Is this something that, I guess for lack of a better word, we've independently verified? Because they, they mentioned in, at least their brief letter, that they've done an independent financial audit in calendar year 2015 and 2016. So maybe that's outdated, but do we have at least a basic understanding of what they're telling us is, is accurate, or is that going to be part of the negotiation?
Yes, we will be asking them to share that information with us.
Okay.
I recall in the past, that was one of the, I don't want to say problems we had with them, but one of the issues that would come up is that we would not be provided with the backup information as to what was actually being done for those services. And, and I, I can recall back when we were a part of a JPIA, and that was one of the issues that came up quite frequently, is that none of the cities were getting any of that information. So I would hope that that would be a, a matter of course. I mean, certainly we wouldn't expect anything less from any of our vendors, and, and certainly from, from this shelter as well.
But I think you're right, Councilmember Chavez. I think it was a JPIA couldn't provide those numbers. I'm not, well, we should ask if San Gabriel can provide that.
Well, everybody was pointing the finger at everybody else, I think, if I recall.
Yeah.
And, and that was why it kind of broke up.
Yes.
We do have numbers from the Humane Society going back a number of years, as far as the number of animals they intake each year, the number of animals that are adopted, and all of those statistics specific to Temple City, so we can certainly provide that to you also.
And Mayor Fish, just one, one more question. Sort of in tandem with what Mayor Proton Chavez was saying, as part of the negotiations, you know, what are we getting? I think one good question to ask is, is there anything in, from, from their perspective that, of what they can do to control costs, or is there a plan, or are they simply telling us that this is some inevitability, and there's really nothing they can plan or prepare operationally or, or whatnot that can maybe stymie that? Or should we be expecting that every year there's going to be a 28% increase? Because this would be a-
Substantial.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we keep talking about like, costs, costs going up, right? These, these topics.
I think you've kind of hit a spot there, because there is some indication based on their request that they want to go to an annual agreement.
Yeah, exactly.
Correct. Exactly.
And negotiate each year. So that tells me that we can expect, you know, something in that, I don't know how much, but probably every year it's going to go up.
Yeah, so I, I think from our, from a planning perspective, while this might represent a small cost in the larger operating budget, but as councilmember you mentioned earlier in other discussions, we're tight right now. So I think every little thing is going to count. So I think instead of looking at kind of in such a narrow manner where it's just year by year, perhaps there is some due diligence that we can do, or maybe the Humane Society can do, to see what their future plans are moving forward. I mean, are they expecting like two years from now they're going to go kaputts? But, you know, then we should be preparing for that, right? So I don't know. But I, I fully agree with, you know, having, moving forward with staff negotiating with, with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society.
I know they have been out canvassing the neighborhood. They, they left me a notice that I needed to get my new dog licensed, and she's a female Cocker Spaniel, and they put male German Shepherd. And I thought, huh, she's far from a German Shepherd, and it's the wrong sex, so they might be a little overworked. I don't know. But I'll go take care of that soon.
Brian, I'm sorry, Mayor Fish.
Um, go he, go ahead.
Brian, do you call what, what our costs were when we had it in-house, pretty much? I know it was before your time, I think, but-
It was before my time and before Mr. Forbes' time, so Brian Arizumi was here, but I would, it's a bit of an apples-to-apples, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Because even though we still had our own in-house, we still use some of their services.
Right. I believe we use sheltering services and-
Sheltering everything is-
What, Brian?
And then we just had one, one employee, I think.
Yes, one employee.
Barry.
Yeah, well, we have the services in-house. We had one full-time animal control officer, and part of the expenses were for equipment necessary, the truck and any tools necessary to complete the task. And then we contracted with San Gabriel Humane Society for sheltering services and after-hour services. And so on weekends, evening, and holidays, per our policy, as far as what they could respond to, and they, they were dispatched from the sheriff's department. So the sheriff's department had to approve any after-hour responses based on our policy.
And we also did licensing.
We had licensing operations 100% in-house.
Okay. I would think that's pretty. I have a question, and I, I have to ask Brian. Are they a nonprofit? They are a nonprofit. Does that affect anything? Not really?
Um, in what sense? Just, no, not, not really. I mean, it makes their, their financial information is more public, which is good for us and our constituents, so.
Okay. Okay. Um, Councilmember Sternquist, did you have any, any more questions?
No.
No? No? Are we good? Okay. Going to open it up to, going to open it up to public comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
Jim, come in.
Oh, Jim is coming in.
We thought you were stretching, but you were actually raising your hand.
I know.
Do a lot of stretching, too. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was just going to say, one thing that they always need there at the Humane Society is towels, blankets, newspapers. They can always use them. So if you have towels and blankets, wash them, but don't use any fabric softener, that gives them a smell, and of course, you don't want to wash the newspaper. But they always have a need for it. So if you ever have any, take them down, they, they really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Fish, I would make a motion that we authorize staff to negotiate an amended agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for animal control, shelter, and licensing services.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish.
Yes. Moving on to item C, exploration of community needs and fiscal challenges.
It's the trifecta.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, I bring this item before you tonight, and this is kind of a, and Margot's presentation was kind of a culmination of a lot of discussion points, oh, since January, since the discussions about the issues with the Landscape and Lighting District, Ms. Parkaras' or Administrative Services Director's mid-year budget review, and what you just heard presented tonight. All very sobering issues, and the issue is, what are we delivering in terms of services, and how do we have the funding in order to pull those together? Just to be very straightforward and clear. So you've given me some direction, and hopefully we'll have some positive news pretty soon, related to some legislative relief that's going forward, related to that, but that won't get us all the way. And you heard, especially in particular, the challenges tonight, related to pavement management. So I think at this point, it would be prudent for the council to at least consider engaging some services to gauge the community and see how they're feeling related to, one, the services, the infrastructure, and the needs of the community, and the resources that is going to be necessary to provide those, both short-term and long-term. You know, as we've discussed in those three key areas, what that could take. So to really get a good, deep sense of the sentiment, engage them thoughtfully, and to see what's possibly viable, this is probably, in my mind, the best way to gauge that, so you have a more scientific understanding, understanding that you, you know your community, and you know it well, but when it comes to these types of issues, it takes a little bit of a deeper dive to understand what those issues are, what issues will come up. I think you heard the supervisor talk yesterday, especially when they, they were poll, they were dealing with Measure W, and what things, if it was just on its surface, okay, this would may have passed, but this, these other key elements kind of pushed it over the edge and, and resonated with the community in a deeper way, so that it could, you know, eventually seek passage, and you had support for it. That's simply the, tonight, my summary of- That's simply the tonight, my summary of that of 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 the report. I don't need to necessarily go over all the things we've discussed in depth of the last few, uh, last couple of months, but it's a culmination of a pretty exhaustive discussion on all of those issues going forward, so I'd like to seek your direction tonight to see if we would want to engage in those survey services to get, uh, a sense from the community on where we're going forward to give you additional information as was discussed earlier as to the, some of the tough decisions you'll have to be making going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Council questions?
Madam Mayor, just a quick question for our city manager. Uh, Mr. Cook, I I trust that when we, uh, when you and the consultant, uh, prepared the survey and questions, will be based on, for example, some of the nuanced, more nuanced, uh, issue brought up in the, for example, the pavement management plan, you know? I mean, I'm not here to start to create a question, but something like, you know? But you were based on some of the key findings of the report?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Like the pavement management conclusions.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mayor Fish, I just, uh, maybe for clarification, I know in the staff report you mentioned these different categories. Uh, is the intent of the survey to cover all these in separate categories or that's sort of up in the air? We don't know. We don't know how we're gonna formulate that survey yet?
No, there's, um, the firms that you would use, like for example Fairbanks, Basil and Mullin, they know how to craft those so that you can ask those questions separately, understand the validity of the responses that you're getting and what 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 responses get the most type of feedback, positive or negative. So I've already, they would kind of cover those four areas, so you could have a gauge.
Was it gonna cover all four?
Yeah, it would cover all four.
Yeah, and and I guess the the follow-up to that one is, um, cause I know we've done some surveys in the past as well. But for example, some of maybe the more heavy-hitting issues that we've talked about as a council in the past, we've had either community meetings or some sort of more concentrated efforts towards public outreach and engagement. Is that something that would be done prior to the survey? Or is the survey sort of just being done as a barometer for no outreach at all? Or whether or not you feel that makes a difference?
Obviously, that would make a difference, but considering some of the time for time constraints that we're dealing with with, uh, the election schedule that we have, uh, this would also inform you on some of the education efforts you would need to make as well. Is, I think that's gonna be a key component of this is, for example, with the Landscape and Lighting District, okay? Do you know how the funding sources are done with pavement management? Do you know where funding sources are? Do you know why we don't have this level of funding? So it will actually help to, some of the questions that will be asked will help to engage, uh, will help to provide you as the council with some information about what the public does and does not know related to that as well, to help both either craft a message of 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 public information and, uh, not advocacy, but public information related to those issues.
Thank you.
Uh, I I think William has a very good point. I mean, I I'm wondering if you do a survey, and people aren't educated about the need or what the long-term cost is, that they might just automatically say, no, I'm not in favor. There's just too many taxes from county, different issues. There's just too much. But even if you had one, invested in one public meeting where you said this is going to be about a possible, you know, increased parcel tax or, um, sale, sales tax, you might get a different, um, turnout, because I'm wondering what would happen if that was a very close, you know, turnout that it was like forty-six to, you know, fifty-four. Does that make a hundred?
I think so.
Then then we're like, well, we know we have to do something, so then it becomes, you know, a, just an issue that the council is going to have to decide, especially if it wasn't in favor of a parcel tax or a sales tax. So I'm just wondering if it might behoove us to invest at least in like one meeting prior to the survey? It's just my thought.
May may I actually offer at least my thought on on? I think surveys are by nature designed to be, um, to solicit a more scientifically-based, mathematically-based, statistically, if you will, um, reliable response. Whereas community meetings, we know certain type of people will come to community meetings, certain people you would never show up. I don't think, uh, can be, while it's useful, may not be able to draw and give you statistically reliable results.
But do you think statistically and reliable, I mean, I I get it when it comes to things that are not financially going to affect someone's livelihood? Cause I think when you're talking about taxes, just like you heard Steve say, I think four hundred dollars is a lot of money. And he just heard the presentation. And but I mean, so I think there's scientific, surveys are great for certain things, but I think it's a whole different ballgame when you're talking about taxes or things that are gonna affect people's livelihoods, especially seniors who are living on fixed incomes. I mean, you know, when we had two cent increases for sanitation district, I mean, we definitely heard from a large population.
I I'm not sure what the survey actually would result in asking, are you okay with four hundred dollar increase? I'm not sure.
No, I don't think it's gonna say four hundred, right?
And I don't think you need to do anything. I think I think you need, I don't think you do, it's a mutually exclusive thing. I think I I think it's important to get a barometer of, from a a survey so that you have a strong baseline of information and then you can do community engagement as well. And you can, and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have, they're not mutually exclusive.
Do you know if Arcadia has a, what, is it a three percent sales? What's the increase?
They're 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 going to the cap, so they're going to three, three, three and a quarter.
Three and a quarter. Do you know if they did a survey?
Yes.
They did do one?
Yes.
Okay. Roger Chandler told me they didn't, city council member, so I'm just curious.
You really? You trust that he says?
No, I don't sometimes. It just depends, but they did do one, okay.
I don't know. I don't know, but they had, they had some information related to.
Okay. The only reason I ask is.
Most, most, most agencies do, do do levels of surveys, um, so.
I definitely understand the premise. I mean, you and I had talked about it and it's, I I just hope we get our bang for our buck.
I tend to agree with Vince. I I'm not sure a meeting, at least to start things off, is gonna be helpful. What do we get? Two, maybe three inner people at the most? It's not very representative. I think the goal of of what we're talking about here is to try to get as much input as possible. I'm I'm assuming that these people who do this for a living will be able to guide us on that. And ultimately, isn't the goal here to help us to understand and to make an informed decision on whether or not we as a council want to or feel that this should go on the ballot before our constituents? Because if 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 the surveys or or they tell us that that this does not have any chance of passing, then why spend the two hundred thousand dollars in having a general election? Uh, I I don't, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the survey is intended to basically predict necessarily the outcome, but to give us, although in a point, in a point it is, but 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 to help us to make that decision on what direction that we're going to move. My only concern is that, and I share this with Cynthia, is that, you know, forty-five to fifty thousand seems like a lot to me. Uh, and I don't know if that's the going rate. Um, you know, that that's basically a, what, a fourth of what it would cost us to hold an elect or put it on a ballot, you know, as a survey. Is this similar to the 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 information that we got regarding the propositions and stuff?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about here?
When you did measure.
Yeah, measure A or whatever. Okay. And I don't remember spending that kind of money on that, did we?
Uh, it was, it was relatively close.
I thought it was about twenty to thirty.
Yeah, I think it was twenty, thirty thousand.
Yeah, I thought it was twenty to thirty thousand.
And also too, as, um, one consultant who I've used and worked with for many years, the, um, because of the challenges of getting responses, the reason the cost has escalated so high is they've had to do a more extensive outreach than they've ever had to do before. So the cost, the cost of a survey ten years ago, because of smartphones and everything else, has escalated in cost. I was even surprised by that too, but no, the cost, and it's not that technology, technologies haven't gotten better. It's actually the effort to get the level of responses to make a statistically valid survey is just, it takes a lot more effort.
And will this survey be a mail survey or will it be online?
It would be a combination of of, it's actually a combination. So they'll, they'll try to hit people on the phone, but there will be, some people will get, just as they did with Measure VP, um, Measure VP as well, not. Prior, what, I was gonna, hey, hey, excuse me.
And how many, how many people do they need to respond to be a valid sur- survey?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember what the statistically valid amount of universe of of folks are, but.
It's about four hundred.
Four hundred.
Four hundred creates a statistically valid survey that tends to be based on, uh, a phone survey or a mailed survey, uh, where people are being reached out to in part based on demographics, different, living in different parts of the city. Um, again, meeting different demographic categories. Then if you also run, um, a mailed survey that goes to everyone or you run an online survey where everyone can participate, that has less statistical validity because it may skew towards the people that are interested in returning it. And as as the city manager said, given the rise of smartphones and even your house phone telling you who's calling, um, phone surveys, they're still considered statistically valid, uh, but slightly less so because it's based on people who are willing to pick up and talk. So it it's still the best way to do it. You're, you will get primarily a phone survey, but you will get the other, other venues as well. Just have to sort of take those others with a grain of salt.
Now, now, when you bring this back to us with a, a budget amendment at the next council meeting, will you be able to provide us with a little bit more information as to what this is going to consist of? Or do we just say, here's forty-five, fifty thousand, come back at us later and let us know what you're doing? At that time, it's too late and we're thinking, well, that's all we're getting for our fifty thousand? I would like to know a little bit more about what we're gonna actually be getting for this forty-five to fifty thousand.
Sure. Um, in fact, Mr. Murphy and I received some information, uh, today, uh, related to that. And we, it it, it's also a balance and it's, there's no secrets at the end of the day, but it's also a balance of trying to have that survey have validity too, so that we, it would be, uh, there would be, there would be enough information in there to know what you're getting.
Thank you.
At the end of the day.
Yeah, well, that.
But not at a level that here's every single question, you know?
I understand, but I think we need more than what we have here. We, we have like nothing here.
Right.
Just asking for the money and 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 for the cost of a survey, but I don't know what that survey is gonna entail, what services they're gonna be providing to us. Um, I I understand the general concept and a lot of people, when we mention consultants and surveys and spending money on those things, a lot of people out there will have a trouble with that, think, well, you guys are just wasting money. But I understand, and I think what a lot of people don't understand is that as a small city, we don't have the staff. We don't have the infrastructure to do a lot of these things so that we can make those decisions. And as a consequence, we have to do out and go out and and do these types of things. And again, if it's gonna help me make a decision for the betterment of the community, then I say it was well worth it. But at the same time, you know, before I, at least before I give my blessing on something like this, I'd like to loan a little bit of information of what what I'm actually getting for this fifty thousand.
And with that timing, I'm gonna have to bring that back to you at the next council meeting as well, so that we can get the survey done. Well, we have to get it done because of timing issues.
Now, is the timing issue because of the election process? And we're shooting for the November.
That would be one option for the council to consider. There are other options as well for the council to consider.
And you'll bring those back too as well?
Yeah, but in terms of timing and everything else that's going on, uh, time is not on our side that way.
Now, in the report, you mentioned the cost of the election is estimated to be about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then you mentioned an assessment district mail-in ballot election is estimated at seventy-five. What what is that? Is that a?
So that's two different, so that that'll let me, I'm I'm sorry, I neglected to answer Councilmember Stern's quest, earlier question. So a parcel tax, um, is a special tax, requires two-thirds of a majority vote. That parcel tax, um, if it's for a general purpose, uh, require, is a, is a, is a, um, all voters can can vote on it. Same thing with the sales tax. Um, you can choose to use it for general purpose, which is only a fifty plus, fifty percent plus one vote to, for passage. If it's for a special tax, for roadway, it's sixty-six percent. For the Landscape and Lighting District that's being noted there, um, that is a majority of the, of the, um, of the individuals assessed, that assessment.
So that's the assessment district mailing.
That's why that, that's why that cost is lower because it's not a general election that we're having, we would have the county of Los Angeles.
So if we decide to go in that direction, in addition to the regular cost, the regular ballot measure, there'd be an additional seventy-five?
Uh, separate. It just could completely separate, because if you're going for the general tax or the parcel tax, that's where the county would.
We could do it for both.
You could do it for both. Um, in in that case, would the assessment district, um, Harrison Associates, who's met with you here prior, would be assist, would be the entity that would assist you, the the city.
And that's the seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, that's the seventy-five, plus or minus some.
Yeah.
Money there.
But the survey wouldn't address both.
The survey would address.
The, I would suggest the survey address all those issues. So you have, you have the widest.
Okay.
Uh, you have the, you have the most information possible to make a decision.
All right.
Is there such thing as a pavement district?
We asked that.
I'm half joking, but I'm half serious.
No, I, I, um, we asked a couple of those questions, not that we're aware of, but I can go back to Harris and ask because we actually asked related to some other district issues as well. I don't believe so.
Make all the poor streets a pavement district.
We can, we can ask, I can ask.
I'm only asking because I I know the, the, the threshold is different when you're assessing a parcel tax versus.
The clearest one on the assessment districts are Landscape and Lighting and that's, that's been in state law for a long, long time.
Sorry, that just popped up. I had to ask. Thank you.
Actually, I wanted to ask that question because.
Oh, you did?
Because to me, that's also a special district, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, only for folks who live in.
Like wide, wide a distinction, I guess, it's the.
Only for folks who actually own properties.
Bri- Brian, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the survey, since, you know, it's, it sounds like, and you had said, that it's going to cover all four of these. And, you know, these are pretty complicated. Each one is different, each one different amounts. You know, I I'm a little concerned with a survey actually including all of this information and educating the public, especially with the pavement management, to what they need. And our, and our, and it, and if it does, are they gonna read it? I know that sounds, I know that sounds kind of complicated, but are are.
The firm we would come back with, um, who's done these surveys, done it from LA County, done it for many, uh, large entities, is, they're really good at this stuff. It's the best way, it's the most succinct way I can put it. They're really good at this stuff and.
We won't be able to see it.
But I, they, they, what's that?
We won't be able to see it before.
I, well, you'll, the results will be, you'll, you'll see the results at the end of the day.
We won't be able to see what's sent, what's being sent out as the.
I would, well, you're actually, I don't wanna go too much into detail, but like.
It's similar to Measure A, right?
Yeah, and you were, and we exclude you from that survey as well too, so.
No, we were just saying with Measure A, in some cases, it was three sentences. I I'm not sure that's going to cover especially the, um, pavement management, how important it is. I mean, we have, I mean, we have a report here. I don't know how many, a hundred pages.
But 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 I don't think the survey is meant to actually educate everybody about pavement management plan. It's actually gonna be asking where, how people feel about certain things in, um, in 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 the city. Like I said, I'm not trying to attempt to create those questions, but 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 let's say, one of the question may be, are are you aware that, uh, all the low-hanging fruit for pavement, um, management has already been done and the next thing is, uh, heavy? Yeah, are you aware of that? Are you aware the city has been spending the last five years doing all the low-hanging fruit maintenance? Are you aware the city has been spending the last five years doing all the low-hanging fruit maintenance? And now's the time to really face the tough thing. But may or may not be actually teaching people about pavement management, well, we've got a PCI of forty, fifty A comparable with San Gabriel. I don't think they're gonna ask that question. Are you, we're just as bad as San Gabriel, I don't think that question will come up.
I could see how the questions could be written to be educational though.
Yes.
So, that in itself could be education.
Yeah, but not, that's not the goal of the survey though.
But I mean, the way you framed like a, a question.
I think it's kinda like, I should, actually, I should apologize, I've been calling council member. Mayor Protem Chavez pointed out.
I'll respond to either.
Yeah. Like, like Mayor Protem pointed out, this is meant to, to really guide us to make informed decisions, whether this is the right thing to move forward. Educating is only second to...
I guess what I have a hard time with is, I saw the presentation, I see the numbers, I live in the city, I drive through it. From a policy standpoint, I, I need to move forward with putting something on the ballot and letting our residents decide. I guess that's my heartburn is, because I know we need to be responsive, and, and in everything we do, we are responsive and try to be to our residents. But trust me, when you have ten or fifteen residents blowing a tire on their way to work because they're in a pothole, I mean...
I must travel a different area of Temple City.
Drive cleverly.
I don't, I mean, literally, I enjoy my drive from my home to Pasadena, and half of, a first part of it is through Temple City, and obviously, I do not drive on the streets that are in these very poor conditions, and, you know.
But I'm saying if we don't...
I'm not saying they're not there, but I agree with Jerry. When I see San Gabriel and Temple City on the same length, I, I just can't even imagine that, to be honest with you, but apparently it is, so...
But if we don't do anything, it's...
Well, no, I agree, we have to do something, there's no question about that.
So, I guess that's why I have a hard time is because I, I look at what, what was up there. I mean, I know the reality, I see it.
But you know what, but I think, but I think what this survey is going to do also is, the pavement management is only one thing. There are other issues that we have to deal with, and those are listed down there. So, so if it were just pavement management, I would probably agree with you. There's no question that we need to do something, and the voters are gonna have to approve it. And we're probably, based on what we heard tonight, I would say that we can make an informed decision on that. Can we on everything else? I don't know at this point, and that's what will help us, I think, so that's...
Okay.
And I agree with you, I think the forty to fifty thousand's a tough pill to swallow, but, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those costs of business, I think, sometimes where you have to kinda look at those things.
Okay, do we have any other council questions? Okay, I'm gonna open up public comments. Okay, council comments?
Mayor Fish, just one, one quick thing on, I think Mayor Protem Chavez brought up one important point that I kinda wanna reiterate and add a little bit to is, is I think it will be important for us to at least understand a bit more details about how this is gonna be carried out. So, like, for example, while we may not know the questions that are gonna be asked, but, like, for example, is staff or you, are you involved in part of that formulation of those questions? Do you have feedback? Do you, I don't know, for lack of a better word, sign off on certain things? While I can understand trying to keep some sort of space between us and the questions, but I think part of what I'm hearing from some of my council colleagues is, well, we're sort of, it's sort of like this black box that we're asking these people to churn out a survey, but we have no idea what's gonna be asked. And then we'll get random questions from people that come up and talk to us and say, hey, I was just asked this survey, what, what do you know about this? Why, why was this question being asked? And then sometimes we might get caught off guard and not sure how exactly to respond to that, so...
Well, a good example is with this clean energy thing, we're, we have much, we've sent things out.
Yeah.
People have gotten things in the mail, we've published stuff, and still people say, what is this? You know, so...
So, so I, I think at least as much clarity as possible, given sort of the, this situation and time constraints, I think would help us at least feel more comfortable about putting this money in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Fish.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Fish, I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to explore survey services concerning community needs and measures to address fiscal challenges, and to authorize the city manager to provide a budget amendment along with further explanation of how these services are gonna be provided at the next city council meeting.
Second.
Let me get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Moving on to item eleven, update from city manager.
Actually, nothing, I'll, I'll, I'll have a little more structured, my next city manager's report, we're gonna have a little more structure to it, a few things that I'm gonna add that'll be part of a regular city manager's report, but considering the evening, the time, nothing else to report tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks to staff for their work on the pavement management, thanks to staff for their work this weekend with the Hello Kitty grand opening, the event that that was.
Item twelve, update from city attorney.
None tonight, thanks.
Item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hocks or standing committee meetings? I don't think we had any, correct? Okay, item fourteen, item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor Fish. Yeah, speaking of the Hello Kitty dental office, I, I do wanna comment a little bit about that. It was, it's unusual, just 'cause we, at least in, in my time here, I haven't seen anything like that. I mean, it's, it's, on the surface, it's just a dental office. And then you realize they involve like the corporate side of Sanrio, which is this international firm that markets the Hello Kitty character. And then you start drawing in, you know, a lot of media, a lot of crowd, and I guess there's a lot of pretty passionate Hello Kitty fans out there that like this kind of stuff. So, but, but I, the one thing I wanted to point out was, some of the background behind what led to the road closure was the, the owner's wife, who I guess manages the, the office, she initially reached out to me a couple of months ago, and then I had told her to meet with Brian, or our city manager, Brian here, 'cause this was sort of like an unusual request, right? Like, I was sort of concerned about, you know, are we setting a precedence by just arbitrarily blocking off roads here and there for, for business? But what I really appreciate about staff and, and I wanna, you know, we, we talk about a lot of complaints and stuff, but I also wanna make sure we, we commend staff on, on a job well done. So, I think this is an example of staff proactively going out, reaching out to the owners of this business, and then letting them know based on our expertise, our knowledge of our city, our way of doing traffic control, safety measures, and letting them know, hey, if you wanna do this, you gotta do it right, and this is the way you do it right. And so, I appreciate staff taking that proactive measure. I also appreciate them being willing to, you know, put up that extra money to do things properly so that there's no accidents, or at least I don't think there were any issues, right? So, so I, I think, it might seem like a small thing, but I just feel like as a city, if we could really take that same approach to like everything else we do, I think we'd be so much better with at least, maybe not just the business community side, but even things that we, how we deal with residents who come in for other services. That, that proactive approach and letting them know, hey, we, we know how to get you through this, this is the best way to do it. So, so thank you, Brian, and I know Brian Arizumi was a key player in that too. And, and just the second thing, I really appreciate Supervisor Catherine Barker, Barker for a meeting with us. Oh, it was yesterday, yesterday morning, at the library. She's been a tremendous partner, and, and the fact that she brought all of her staff to that meeting and had all the expertise like right there, ready to like address or answer any questions or issues that came up, I thought was, was really fantastic. So, I just wanna publicly thank her for, for, for doing that, and look, looking forward to a lot of the potential projects that we can partner with the, the county. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Couple of things, with a note on Catherine Barker's visit to the city, just an update that she shared with us, her Public Works deputy, that the library renovation is in plan check now. So, that's positive and exciting. The sanitation district is holding Earth Day at their Whittier office on April thirteenth, and it's a family-friendly festival, there's face painting, food, demonstrations, a tour of the facility, and it's on April thirteenth in Whittier. And I wonder, can we put that link? There's a flyer if I send it to you, Brian, can we put it on our website? Okay, so we'll put it on the city website. Had a question for our new city attorney, Greg. I've been hearing some, a few complaints, not a lot, and council recently all had received one about a B and B that was problematic in our city over a period of six months to nine months. I'm wondering what the legal issues are for a city to put an ordinance in place that would not allow rentals of apartments or homes for less than sixty days. So, I, I'm, I'm curious if council might wanna entertain putting something in place so that we can, you know, get ahead of this, but I know there's some legal implications with what people can do with their property also.
Sure, generally what you would, the general cutoff date is thirty days.
Oh, thirty days.
Less than thirty days is considered short term.
That's what I meant, I don't know why I said sixty, but, thank you.
Let me make sure that I bring you the right information, so I'm gonna take a note on that, and I'll bring it back as the city attorney's report at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I, I thought we already have something on the books.
I, I think, I think you have something on the books that, that limits, I just wanna make sure that what I give you, the advice I give you is up to date. There are some things on the books that go back a ways and may not be fully enforceable today, but I'll take a look and I'll make sure that we have, that what...
I think we have something on the books already that we've been enforcing as well.
We have been enforcing, I'll take a look at that first.
Yeah, but there was some issue that they were able to continue to do it, so I don't know what that was, but...
It's just that you go, you really don't, cannot really go in and kick people out, you have to follow procedures.
Yeah, I'll, again, I'll let the city attorney...
Might be an enforcement issue rather than a...
Do we have that in place where you cannot rent your apartment or house for...
The thirty-day cutoff is, is, is the, is the key component, but...
We have that in...
Without, without going into a ton of detail and allowing the city attorney to kinda do that...
Well, I don't want it to do work if we already have something in place.
Not necessarily what, the way you're looking, the, the way you're describing it, Councilmember Sternquist, so...
I want it to be, yeah, I'd like it to be the most restrictive it can be.
And there's, and there's, and there's some analysis and some other things that we, we need to present to you related to that. We, and we need to rope in our community development staff as well as part of that, as part of that conversation.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and one last thing, with that, are we still having any problems with the birthing houses? I have not heard that for so long, so whatever we did, it seems to have worked.
We do, again, you're giving, you receive your monthly code enforcement of files. There has not been, as, that gets into a bit of a delicate issue as well, but there has not been, in terms of types of businesses, home, the issue about home-based businesses can get a little complicated as well. So, but we, staff is trying to do the best they can to, one, work with, work with our property owners to make sure what they're doing is legal and proper, but it gets into a little bit more of a longer discussion.
Okay, so on that code enforcement thing, 'cause thank you, Michael, I don't know, I think he left, but, for that, and I was looking at it, I mean, it's pretty lengthy, so I'm wondering, like, do some go off eventually? 'Cause it's so long, but, and how would that be listed? Would it just be home business, or would it say...
And we're, we're providing you with public information that any member of the public can, can see. So, because there is a prosecutorial function that we as staff play in, in, in that, some of that information at that time is, is not all spelled out there.
Okay, so we wouldn't know by looking, 'cause you referenced the code enforcement.
No, you would not, I know, you would, not, you would not necessarily know.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Yu?
I think, Madam Mayor, let me congratulate you on a very well-run meeting.
Oh, thank you.
You know, even though we got a really...
It was, yeah.
Re-reverse the order and stuff, and then you did a wonderful job, I just wanna comment you on that. And secondly, I just wanted to also echo my fellow council members, and we're very pleasantly surprised with the meeting with, with LA County. And we've been meeting with Supervisor Antonovich for years, but it was really pleasantly surprised when Supervisor Barker brought all her, a good part of her staff, and really addressed a lot of issues with us, and that was a very good meeting, so just wanna echo that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I thought, I, I hope the meeting with Supervisor Barker will become a, an annual event.
Hope so too.
It, I don't, I know that it was, we didn't have, we had some difficulty in arranging it, maybe that's just logistics. I would hope though that in the future, maybe we, we might wanna tackle some of the more bigger issues. For example, the homeless issue wasn't discussed at all, and so, rather than just kind of have a pre-arranged agenda so that everybody can give their own spiel, I would, I would more like to see, you know, as, attack some of those, some of those other issues that have, have more of an impact on our city rather than, than maybe just regionally. And also, were any, were any, did the city have any expenses for that dental thing? Did, did, did we, I know we had a lot of staff there, we had barriers up, and how did that work out? Street closed?
There's a street, there's a street closure permit with a fee associated, and the staff that's there, they reimburse us for those costs.
Do, do you know how much that was? How much we were paid for that, that event?
I can, I can pull that information together, 'cause we were still having to bill them for a couple of extra hours.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is that, you know, William mentioned that, you know, are, are we setting a precedent, you know, for this type of thing, and, and I can understand that we wanna be amenable to these and stuff like that, but, you know, I, I, I don't wanna just to see it happening to those who can afford to do something like that. You know, if we're, if we're going to welcome a new business to the city, I don't want it to appear that only those with sufficient funds can have such an event, so. I don't know how much they spent on this, there were a lot of people there, obviously, it was a lot of, lot of press, a lot of, anytime you can get the state and US representatives out, obviously, it's gonna get everybody's attention, but, I don't know. I, I asked, you know, it's interesting, the, the individuals that I talked to were very nice and very, very nice people, and, and we got a, a private tour of the place, and I was interested to, it's, I asked the question, is this just for children? But it wasn't, it, they, apparently, they treat adults there too, but the whole place was Hello Kitty, and, and I was in my dental office yesterday, and I'm thinking, that'd be kinda weird sitting in a Hello Kitty room.
They had two other...
Did they have, I didn't see the other rooms, for the adults that they have?
Just purple.
Oh, okay, I didn't get to see those, I just saw the Hello Kitty side.
It is purple, but...
They weren't all themed.
I think the majority was the regular ones, right?
Not themed, correct.
Was it? Oh, okay. Maybe we were just highlighting the, the other part probably, maybe, so. That was a very nice event, a lot of people, and sounded, looked like everybody was having a good time, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo my fellow council members. I was very happy, happy with Catherine Barker's event. I think it helped all of us to meet her staff. I would like it to become an annual event, maybe not in that room because it was a little tight, but we did...
It was strategically planned there.
But we did not know, we, we, in our defense, we did not know that she was going to bring that many people.
Wonder why we didn't just have it in the regular library, 'cause it's, it wasn't open.
It wasn't?
No, the library didn't open until ten, or eleven.
We, we were told she was gonna bring, I think, four people with her, five, and she brought more than ten. brought more than ten, which was wonderful. I mean, I was able to speak to each one of them, each one of them gave me their business card, each one of them told me that if there was an issue, they would be more than welcome, or more than happy to come to one of our meetings and give us any information. I think it was just really good to actually meet these people and s, you know, speak with them and, and see, you know, get their, their expert, um, information right from them, you know? I mean, I, I, I just thought it was great. I thought it was, you know, it was kind of, you know, a lot of t, detail, but I think we needed that. And, um, I, I myself liked the topics, I thought they were right on, right, right on, right on target. So I'd like to thank her office and thank her staff because I thought that was very good and I can't, I, I can only assume it's probably a little difficult for her to get all of those people together at the same time, in the same place. Um, as far as the Hello Kitty, Dr. To, you know, he seemed very, very appreciative of what the city did. Uh, I do know that they did, um, come to us and I was appreciative in the fact that they did warn us that they were expecting a lot of people. I mean, they could have just had an opening like any other business and it could have been very dangerous for that amount of people in the street and the fact that a lot of them were little children and they were running everywhere. So I, I do appreciate that. They did purchase, I believe, uh, insure it, do they, um?
They purchased special event insurance, they paid our fees and everything.
They purchased special event, um, insurance. So for me, I thought it was great because, again, I didn't realize that it was, I, I don't know what I thought of, I guess I thought it was a Hello Kitty store at first, and then when I heard it was a dentist office, I kind of thought, oh, well, that's kind of good, you know? Um, but the, I mean, the grand opening really opened my eyes, I think they're gonna be very successful. I, I know many adults who are into the Hello Kitty still, um, because it has been around for over fifty years, so.
Do you think it hurts any less in the Hello Kitty room?
Um, you know.
Than in the adult room?
You know, the one, I will say.
Maybe psychologically.
The one thing that, that Dr. To did explain to me, and I think he probably explained to most of you, is the way that their dental, um, rooms are set up, everything, all of the equipment, all of the, uh, exam, every, everything is behind the patient instead of to the side or in front. And he said it's a, that's, especially for, for children, it's very, it's less intimidating because they're not seeing the tools and the drills and the, what's coming. I thought that was pretty cool. I mean, I know, I hate, I don't like the dentist, and I know taking my children to the dentist was never fun. Um, I mean, I did it, but it wasn't like something they enjoyed. So I, I like the, that they put thought into it. Um, and again, most of it is for adults, there's, right now, there's only two that are actually themed and there's four that are just regular. Um, and then they're going to open another six exam rooms on the other side, so it's quite large. So again, I just wanted to, you know, the family, it was such a sweet family and it was such a, a, a great, I'm, I'm glad that they actually told us the story about how, how it came about, and I'm not sure if you know the story. The story is, is their young daughter, who is seven, maybe?
Eight.
She actually got up and told the story, and the story was that she was in the hospital and she was very ill and that her parents brought her a Hello Kitty doll. And she said this, she said it comforted her and she felt safe, and her, her father said, well, you know, I'm kind of trying to do that with my dentist business and office, so why can't we make it more friendly for children? I mean, it's a, it's a great, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I, I really appreciate it also that it was told from the children's perspective because it was just really cute, it was cute, I thought it was great, so, I'm gonna con, congratulate them. I don't think I have anything else. Okay, I'm gonna move on to item number fifteen, reimbursements of expenses to city officials. We have none. Additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda? Seeing none. I'm going to adjourn. Good night.